Summerfell City Council for Monday, December 6th. I will request that the Deputy City Clerk call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Jorance Gilati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. Thank you. All five of us are here. I will ask the City Attorney to report out on the closed sessions we had prior.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council and staff. The City Council met in closed session and unanimously voted to opt in as members of the class of public entities in pending litigation entitled Inray National Prescription Opiate Litigation, a case that's pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio Eastern Division. It's national litigation that many public entities are participating in, and the Centerfell City Council voted to participate in litigation tonight. We, you can search it and find out more information, and we will either post in the chat or post on the Clerk's website, a link for people to get more information about the litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. So as is our custom, I just have a few remarks before we get to the agenda. First, if this is the first meeting you're tuning into, you'll see lots of faces on the Zoom screen. That is all our fantastic staff, and if you've been really watching us closely since January, you will see that there are several new faces. So welcome to all the folks that have joined us in the last couple of months, and thank you to staff that keeps our city running so beautifully every single day. We actually haven't met in a while. November was kind of a long month, and the last meeting we had was also the first day of the United Against Hate Week, where Summerfell participated. So I just wanted to thank, give out thanks to our community for supporting these efforts. Our business community who put up these posters, hopefully you still see them. I go, I walk downtown and I still see them. It's awesome in their windows. City staff who held related programming, Councilwoman Kurtz who spearheaded the effort. And the biggest appreciation goes out to our fantastic residents who participated in the different events, and we know we will continue to unite against hate and hate speech. Last night, along with seven other Bay Area elected officials, I participated in a virtual Hanukkah candle lighting with the Jewish Community Relations Council, and it was awesome to gather with electives from all over the South Bay. And as part of the event, our South Bay and North Bay, as part of the event, we reconfirmed our commitment to fighting antisemitism as well as oppression against all other marginalized communities. I am grateful to be supported in these efforts by my council colleagues, city staff, and our wonderful residents. So in closing, and before we get to the rest of our agenda, we like to include a land acknowledgement. This honors the original caretakers, this honors the original indigenous people who have lived and are living in Summerfell. This city, Summerfell, is traditionally home to the Coast Mewaw people, and we thank the original caretakers of this land, and we'll continue to work with them in the years to come. With that, I will turn it over to the Deputy City Clerk. As you, again, if this is a new meeting, you might not know. We have a City Clerk and a Deputy City Clerk, and tonight Brenna is the one guiding us. I will turn it over to you. Wait, you're muted.
Of course I had to do that.
It's okay, it's okay.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. At this time, I'd like to ask staff to turn your cameras off. Thank you, staff. Before I begin, I just want to note that our website is having some technical difficulties at this time. We are diligently working on it. Our Zoom webinar is working fine. Our YouTube channel is working fine. I have placed in the chat the links to the agenda, to the agenda packet, as well as to our YouTube page. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 with the meeting ID 81736920337 pound, or comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you are commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. If you are commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand button to let us know you want to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience technical difficulties, please email city.clerk@cityofSanRafel.org. Closed captioning is available for this meeting and is accessible by selecting the drop down menu next to the red live button on the upper left hand corner of your screen, then selecting view stream on custom streaming service. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic. So the first item of our agenda this evening is open time for public expression. This is on any item that is not going to be on the agenda later. So with that, I will turn it back over to the Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you. So to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. I have a raised hand.
Thank you. This is Ava Crisanti, and I want to talk to you a little bit about what I saw on November 10 and November 23rd at your internment camp for unhoused people, which you have chosen to locate underneath a freeway overpass. On both visits, I confirmed that the camp was disproportionately black and Latino compared to other encampments in Marin, which have better facilities. There remains no bathroom. There remains no running water. There remains no electricity. No, no one is allowed to cook. What concerns me most of all is the constant freeway noise that these people are subjected to because of your decision to place the camp there. This is camp run by your police department. Lynn Murphy is a San Rafael Police Department officer. She's supposed to be a mental health liaison. That's just absurd, given the choice of this location that she's maintaining. These people are being kept underneath a freeway overpass, which is extremely noisy, and between four major intersections, honking cars, and it's, it's unreal the amount of noise that these people are subjected to. But for, for many unhoused people, asthma and COPD are major issues. So on top of the noise, they're also being subjected to an unreasonable amount of exhaust and fumes because of the location you chose. The day that I was there, the, the, the second visit I made in November, your, you, you sent many police, apparently because an attorney, a reporter, and an advocate had entered the space. They, the police had no grounds for removing those individuals, but they chose to interfere.
We have any other public comment? Oh, we do. Okay. Go ahead. Deputy City Clerk, maybe you can remind people how they can unmute themselves.
Sure. Albert, press star six to unmute yourself, please.
I'm sorry, my comment was for another subject.
Oh, okay. And sit tight, we will get to it. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thanks.
I don't see any other hands, but I'll wait a couple of seconds. I see no further comment.
Thank you. I will close the open time for public expression for any items not on the agenda, and I will ask the City Manager to join us to give his City Manager Report. Hi, Jim.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council. I have two items tonight. The first, I'm going to introduce Mark Saban and do a commercial for a report at our next City Council meeting. And then second, I'm going to ask Public Works Director Bill Guerin to provide a brief update on a street project on Bungalow Avenue and a recent gas leak there. I just want to give him an opportunity to talk about that briefly. But first, I'm going to introduce Mark Saban, who just turned on his camera. He's our new homelessness program manager. He's going to be working closely with all of the council members and staff in the County of Marin and our local service providers and all of our community on, on all topics related to homelessness. As you know, the council, the County of Marin is the level of government that has the Health and Human Services Department, which is the county's largest department, and the Marin Housing Authority. So they have been a longstanding partner to the City of Summerfell and the other cities and towns in Marin on all things related to homelessness and mental health. Mark has over 25 years' experience in outreach, substance abuse, mental health, and shelter-based programming. His most recent experience was as the administrator for a California licensed 80-bed mental health rehabilitation center. And before that, he worked for almost eight years as a Senior Director for Life Moves, which was formerly called the Envision Shelter Network in Santa Clara County, where he worked on topics that are all topics that are familiar to us on this topic, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, supportive services to veterans and their families, rapid rehousing, and many related projects and programs. And I'll just note that five or six years ago, a group of Summerfell and Marin elected officials and staff went to Santa Clara County to learn more about the outreach teams that were going on there and, and bring back that learning to Marin. And Mark was part of that group representing the Santa Clara side at that time, and now he's working with us in Summerfell. So Mark is on day four as a city employee. He hasn't made it through a first full week yet. And I've asked him to come to your next City Council meeting, where there's a little bit more time rather than the City Manager update, to do a longer update on the service support area. And Mark, along with other city staff, can provide a status report on the service support area, numbers of people that are there, numbers with case management, kind of how we're, how we're obtaining more case management and, and things like that. So that was just a quick preview for the, the December 20th City Council meeting. And as just a, a bit of a tangent, I thought, as I was introducing Mark, I'd also just mentioned that the city recently announced the availability of $2.5 million in funding for the construction or preservation of permanently affordable rental housing for seniors, families, and individuals and families with special needs, including individuals and families formerly experiencing homelessness. So that was my, my tangent to the connection with introducing Mark. I wanted to make sure that the community knew that we released what we call a NOFA, or Notice of Funding Availability, from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund that will be awarded through a competitive process. And applications are due by 5:00 PM on December 23rd, and I'll ask the City Clerk to put a link in the chat for where you, anyone that would like more information on our Notice of Funding Availability on that, to look there. And I am going to just quickly move to, to Bill Guerin, and then if there's any comments that the council has on either of these two things, either on, on homelessness or public works, there'll be time right afterwards. But I'll introduce Public Works Director Bill Guerin. Public Works has a Bungalow Avenue street repair project. It's a concrete street, which makes it a little bit more complicated than, than other streets in San Rafael. There was a recent gas link leak when working at that site, so I've asked Bill to provide a little bit more information on this project and specifically about the gas leak. So I'll turn it over to you, Bill.
Yeah, thank you, Jim, Mayor and Council. Thanks for allowing me to talk a little bit about the Bungalow project. In mid-September, we awarded a project to Gilati Brothers for $850,000 to do repairs at Bungalow Avenue. We were kind of mainly focused on the lower part of Bungalow Avenue. We did some ADA ramps there for pedestrians. We also have a resurfacing in that area. And we did some additional repairs to the concrete street, which we had Gilati Brothers mark the areas that were going to be demolished, saw cut and removed, and then replaced with, with new concrete. In doing so, the neighbors expressed concern about the extent of removal that was being done. They thought there was a lot more that should be done there, and the mayor and, and Councilmember Hill invited the neighbors to take a walk last week, and we did do that with the neighbors to kind of identify additional areas that they were concerned about, and we got a lot of good feedback from that meeting. Gilati was very responsive. They followed us all around the hill, and they marked the concrete areas that needed to be removed from the neighborhood concerns, which, which they did some extensive additional removal marking. They also happened to have their saw cutting tools up there and were already saw cutting the areas that they intended to replace. And they continued saw cutting and, and sawed through a new part of the concrete that hadn't been marked before and found a gas line that was only four inches in the, in, it was actually inside the concrete road, not below it, which was an unpleasant surprise for everybody involved. That, that put everybody on notice that, that we're going to discover additional utilities in this area. So Gilati is doing additional investigation. They're, they're re-reviewing the, the gas lines and the other lines that are in the streets so that no more saw cutting will happen and, and damage any pipes or water pipes or gas pipes in the area. The gas pipes, obviously, are very dangerous waters, a scarce commodity, but not quite as bad as a gas line. So we are doing that now. We are continuing to do the additional work that was asked of Gilati, but they have introduced new precautions and new investigation to ensure that they do not cut through the gas lines in the future. And I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on that. We have been communicating with the neighbors that went on the walk with us. We're gathering additional names and information, so we'll continue to share out to all the community that's interested in the project up there. But just a quick update on the gas leak that we had.
Thanks, Bill. And Mayor Kate, I'll turn it back to you in case there's any questions for either of those two updates.
Okay, briefly, Vice Mayor.
I'll be super brief. On, on the gas main, I presume you're working with PG&E?
Yes, PG&E is, is already repairing the pipe. They repaired immediately, and they're going to bury it deeper now that they've discovered it's so close to the surface.
Oh, so they were unaware of, so the utilities had been marked, but they were not aware of this particular? And was it a pressure, do you know what the pressure of the gas line was?
I do not, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate you, Director, for coming on and sharing that with us. It is a very old street, and we don't like surprises, and I know that the neighbors were upset, as were we, and we really wanted you to come in and talk about why this is so unusual. So thank you for that. And also a warm welcome to Mark. I was one of the people that met him, along with the chief at the time, Chief Bishop Lynn Murphy, and the Executive Director of St. Vincent's. We went down, and so it's so fantastic to have him up here in Summerfell. So very, very warm welcome, and we look forward to your update, Mark, in two weeks on all things SSA and homelessness and to really close out the year. So, City Manager, unless there's anything else, we'll move on to public comment on this item.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So Deputy City Clerk, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the City Manager's report?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment, and then will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a couple of hands.
Hi, City Council. Just to let you know, the main gas break was literally right outside our door. So we're very concerned, and I understood all your comments and suggestions as to what they're doing to make this safer. But we still have concern about it. And my dad has a comment for you.
What I would like to know is the work that's being done on this street. I've been living on this street, on this house, for 50 years. Nothing was ever done on this street. I'm a little disappointed on what the city is doing in this street, patching these little pieces here and pieces there. If the city doesn't have the money to fix this street right, do a section at a time. If you could do it all in one year, do it on two years or three years, but do it right. This is not right to do this. We're patching, we're still going to end up with an old street. Right in front of my house, where you guys marked the cut, was it not even going to be cut if my wife wouldn't said something to you, little engineer, then he came back and marked it. This is not being responsible for what you guys are doing to us on the street. Take your time, do it right. It's just like in front of your house, or a door on your house. If it's half rotten, you're gonna, you're not gonna fix that half rotten and leave the other part there. It's the same thing that's going to happen on this street. When you get done spending this money, you come back and you have nothing. You didn't do nothing because it's still going to look an old street.
Thank you. And I'll just add, there is a neighborhood email list. When, when Councilmember Hill, with the Director Guerin, and well, as April Miller, Engineer April Miller, when we went out, we had about 20 neighbors that were there, but we recognized more than the 20 neighbors who participated, who were on the street. So Albert and Dad, I do invite you to join that email distribution list, and so you can give input and you can hear the updates. There's been a lot of conversation, so thank you for your input on that very important project.
I have another hand up.
Okay.
Thanks. I wanted to follow up on the last speaker. It is an issue. Can you hear me okay? Are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Beth.
Um, this is Ava Crisanti, and I wanted to follow up on the last speaker. One of the reasons... One of the reasons that cities and towns are starved for infrastructure is because we've failed to have any sort of decent tax structure like we had in the 1950s and 60s, when we were building all sorts of magnificent bridges and tunnels and taking care of our roads. So we need to look at that from a macro level. But I would say that cities are also bleeding money due to litigation costs. And a lot of these litigation costs are very obvious to avoid. And I've been trying to warn San Rafael City Council that the encampment they have under the freeway, where they're interning up to 50 people right now with no services, is not only a glaring human rights issue, but a giant liability for the city of San Rafael. And I have not been able to be heard at all. Last time I encountered Lynn Murphy, she was extremely mocking of my concerns. She acted like a child. I have requested the body cam video. And I can't even get all of that because they'll need to ask permission from other parties. But this is, this is conduct unbecoming of anyone in your, working in your police department. And these are just obvious things. Sausalito is being sued right now. Their legal costs are close to $1 million for their ill treatment of the encampment. Your situation is far worse, and you've had a lot of time to fix it, and you haven't. So I would advise you look into that.
Just going to give it a few more seconds. I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. This is a public comment on the City Manager's report.
There is a hand raised.
Okay.
Hi, we just have one more comment. I know you suggested that-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut you off. We have two-minute public comment, but please, you can email any of us. You can email cityclerk@cityofsanrafil.org, and we will get all of your comments, or you can, and they'll forward it to the Director. So we appreciate your interest in the Bungalow project, and we'll make sure to answer all of your questions.
I see no further comment, Mayor Kate.
Okay, thank you. And I will bring it back. And I know we'll have many folks that tune in in two weeks, and we have more of a comprehensive update on homelessness in San Rafael, specifically the actions the city's taking to support the residents of the SSA and to get them into permanent supportive housing, which is the goal that we all want. So with that, I will now turn to, Sam Andrew, are we all set? Oh, yep, he left. Okay.
Yes, we are.
Okay, just so you know, Councilmember reports. And as I said, we've been out for a couple of weeks. And so maybe you can hit the high points. I know when I had a really long list, I'm like, wow, we are gonna lose a lot of watchers if I start getting through all these. So go ahead and pick your high points to share, and I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
High points. I attended the Lock, Loom and Development Oversight Committee, regular meeting, last month. But the most fun thing I did was get interviewed by the Community Media Center on ways to get involved in things in San Rafael. Spoiler alert, the City Manager's snapshot on the email list is the thing to get on. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay, that was really high level. And I know you were in more meetings than that because I was in them with you, but we will keep going. Councilmember Yuren Skoladi.
Yeah, good evening, and thank you. I attended the Climate Action Committee for Marin County, and which is basically to work together to reduce greenhouse gas in Marin. And there were two guest speakers, I'll go super quick. We had the founder and executive director of Extra Food talking a little bit about the county's proposed reusable footwear ordinance and how it will include all the local adoptions by all the cities. And then we also had a great speaker from California Energy Commissions learning more about building electrification and local policy options. So that was really good. And I also attended the MC Board of Director meetings. And if you go to the homepage, there is a proposed rate adjustment effective January 1st, 2022 for a minimum increase of 0.003 per kilowatt, or 1% of the total bill cost. Go to the website and you will see that, but it's still very reasonable and renewable. So thank you. That's terrible for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. A lot of things to update on. First one I want to share is around the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. We've been now under, working under for about a year and a half, and things are going really, really well. We've also identified that there's some areas that we need to improve on and because there's a difficulty in completing some projects. So I've been participating on the Strategic Ad-Hoc Committee, and we presented a recommendation that will be going to the full board next week, next week. And that will be looking at how do we better staff the organization and allow the agencies still have the flexibility for, to manage their core projects. Some agencies that are smaller are having difficulty, and some of the agencies that are larger choose not to want to staff up to be able to manage these projects. So if you'd like to see more information about this, please go to the MWPA site. You can see the presentation there that really walks through the steps of what we're going to be doing in terms of directing some, not just redirecting a little bit of additional funds into our administrative side and moving some of the operational funds to staff MWPA structure to support the veg management work on the core side. And City Manager Shetzel can also provide some additional background on that process. But it is something the community should be aware of because it is now a little bit of a change from what we initially came out with. The other thing I wanted to just update, I believe, but I'm not 100% sure. Everyone received an update from Cal Cities about the legislative rules that are coming up. There's a lot. There's a lot happening. And these are at the state level, which then go to the counties and the cities of how to implement. But all the different things that we've been talking about, there's a lot of these laws now that are coming into play that we're gonna have to respond to. So that presentation is very, very helpful in terms of breaking it down from a very layperson understanding of what's coming. So, and they've also broken it up by category. Also, within the MCCMC Legislative Group, we've been notified that the state is anticipating $31 billion additional funding coming through. So again, the legislative is going gangbusters to have more, more funding and support coming through. So that will be coming along. So we'll need to keep an eye on what's happening there. And lastly, I've been participating on the county's homeless steering policy, policy steering committee. And there's some additional funding that's going out for case management work and those, as well as some additional through organizations. So that funding has also been happening. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. My committee assignments were somewhat lightweight through the holidays. So I will only just re-report on the tour that we took with, on Bungalow. It was really wonderful to be able to connect with the community members and hear concerns. I would emphasize that, by and large, the changes that are going to be made there are 50 to 75 years permanent on the replacements. It's not every single section, but it is intended to make sure that the most prioritized sections are replaced. And obviously, the gas break is extremely concerning. And I'm assured by Director Guerin that we are working with the contractor in PG&E to get through that. So thank you to all the residents for working through it with the city. And I'm assured that we will get to an outcome that is great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a few meetings, very short report out. Marin Transit met today, and they had a clean audit, which is always good news, on the financials over the past fiscal year. Smart, the Snowmamorin Area Rapid Transit, I'm on that board. We have a new general manager, which I think I've mentioned in past ones, but he actually, he started, his first day was December 1st. His name is Eddie Cummins, and I am looking forward, I'm gonna have a meet and greet with him and looking forward to sharing with him the issues we have here in San Rafael, both with my Smart and my mayor hat on, but he will be fantastic for the organization. I am your, one of your, Mike and I represent the San Rafael on MCCMC, which is Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers, the Economic Recovery. And last Friday, we had a presentation from MEF, MEF, the Marin Economic Forum. And it was important because the county has received some money, not a huge amount, but some money for an Economic Vitality Strategic Plan. So what they were getting was input from the cities as to what that plan might look like. There's not enough money to actually implement a plan, but to start to write it. So stay tuned on that as we get more information. Obviously, the city is one of the stakeholders. I'll be sure to have a report out and pass that information along. So very much in its infancy stage. And then finally, this past weekend, I've been participating in SURGE, which is the show up for racial justice. They have had racial justice workshops for locally elected officials. There are about 35 of us that have been participating, and the last sessions were over the weekend. So I'm hoping, because we've had new electeds that have come on and new interests that hopefully in 2022, there can be some new cohorts that can start that training. It was fantastic. So with that, thank you always to my colleagues for being so busy. It really is extending our connection with our community. So thank you so much. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comment on Councilmember reports?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. I don't see any hands, but I will give it a few more seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the consent calendar. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold from the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any. I will open up a public comment on any of the items, which is A through J, quite a few, public comment on the consent calendar.
Once again, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a hand raised.
Good evening. This is Bill Carney. And I'd like to request that item 5A be removed from the consent calendar. Do you want my comments about it now, or do I wait until you remove it?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and comment now?
Okay, yeah. Well, the reason is so that, to allow you the opportunity to discuss the benefits of letting citizens participate in city meetings by video, as well as by voice, as is now the case. The video is used successfully by the county, and it creates a much, a much better sense of citizen participation in the deliberations of local government. I feel like we need to do everything we can at this point in time to strengthen democracy. And we at the local level are here at the foundation of that exercise of participation. So I would really, again, request that you consider extending the video function as well as the voice function to your Zoom meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. And we will pull that off after we finish getting public comment.
You're unmuted? Go ahead.
This is Johnson Reynolds, a member, resident of Canal, a member of First United Methodist Church, San Rafael. I was wanting to talk about the, the item on the consent calendar that has to do with ADUs and JADUs. We'd like to make a clarification on that. Is it appropriate to speak about that now or not?
Yeah, no, go ahead and comment now, and we'll pull it off as well. But go ahead and comment.
I mean, I'm just clarifying, I tried to look through the staff report on that. I didn't see anything there that said that the ADUs and JADUs would be built, but they could be built on narrow streets as well. I think we were talking about that, taking them off, not, not building them on narrow streets at one point. Just putting a hold on that. But we, with the state legislation, everything, I think that's, that we are going ahead with building ADUs and JADUs on narrow streets anyplace, right? Is that correct? That's my clarification. I was just asking about that. That's the only reason I'd pull it off.
Okay, that's fine. We pulled it off, and we will have that clarification after. Okay?
And the other one, the other one was concerning the Advisory Council on Economic Development and Affordable Housing. You've eliminated that, I think. That's what I understand in 2020. And that's fine. I'm just saying, we need to make sure priorities are on affordable housing as well as economic development. And I guess you're picking up the needs upon economic development and affordable housing in other, other places. And I just want to get clarification on that. So that was, those are the two comments I had. The reason I would pull both of those items off the consent calendar, just to talk about those things. Okay.
Thank you.
I see another hand raised.
Mayor, this is Bill Guerin. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of the chat that's happening here.
I do, I have.
It's inappropriate.
I have just texted the Deputy City Clerk, as well as the City Manager. Let's shut down the chat. I'm sorry, folks. I'm not gonna tolerate hate speech, and a few bad apples actually takes away for everybody. So this meeting, we are gonna close the chat right now, please. People can comment by calling in or emailing. Deputy City Clerk, can you confirm that the chat is closed?
I am getting on that.
You're gonna hold on public comment, tell that's taken care of?
I am.
I'm sorry. Makes me sad.
It's been closed.
Okay, is there a possibility to erase the hate speech that's in our chat?
I will work on that.
Thank you so much. Okay, let me take a deep breath. Are there any other public comments on the consent calendar? Right now, we have pulled 5A and 5D. Is there any other comments? Otherwise, I'm gonna close the public comment and bring it back to the council.
I do have some hands raised.
Well, we are gonna keep the chat open. We're gonna, I know we're all worried. It looks like we've had our chat hacked. I know that the Deputy City Clerk is ready. Inappropriate hate speech will be muted immediately.
Eric? You need to unmute yourself.
Okay, go on to the next one, please.
Okay. Jack, you are up.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. I don't know what is going on, and I'm very concerned about this. So please, if people have comments, they can go ahead and email the City Clerk. City Clerk, if you could give your phone number, and we would read them at a later time.
Yo, does this bitch identify as Ella?
You need to mute. I don't know what is going on. I'm really saddened and disheartened. I'm closing public comment. So bringing it back to the council, we have actually-
Yo, how do you identify as-
Brenna, you need to mute.
What do you ident-
I have closed public comment.
Ella.
Brenna.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. We need to have Thomas come on. I mean, this is not, this is infuriating and not appropriate. San Rafael has a very strong, clear line of what we'll accept and what we will not. We will not accept hate speech during our council meeting in our community. And don't get me wrong, I will, we will figure out another way to do public comment if people can't do it civilly. So at this point, the chat is closed. So at this point, the chat is closed. I'm not taking anymore. Nope.
Mayor Kate, can I propose like a five-minute break? Will that be okay?
Let's get through this consent calendar item, because I know 5A and 5D. I appreciate that. But we have closed, okay.
Sure. Well, I'm ready to make a motion when you are.
Okay, so what we've done is we've polled 5A and 5D. I will ask if you can make a motion on the other items besides those two, and then I'll have the city manager come in and just speak to those two items. So go ahead and make a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing item 5A and 5D.
One second. Okay, roll call, please. Wait, you're unmuted.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, the motion carries 5-0. I will ask the city manager just to speak to 5A as well as 5D. Oh, I see Director Juicy, so go ahead.
Well, I, I'll start us off and ask Ally to jump in if there's anything she'd like to add. On 5A, that is the teleconferencing for public meetings during a state emergency, and Mr. Carney was suggesting the use of video for speakers. That's the one you'd like me to address right now, Mayor Kate?
Yes, and I think we've actually just seen a demonstration as to why we do not have video representation. But go ahead and speak to that.
Yeah, the, the city clerk, Lindsay Lara, has been working with digital staff on hybrid meetings as soon as our second meeting in January. So we are still on track to be able to be in person and on video starting that second meeting in January. That's subject to change, obviously, with COVID changes along the way. So we're working on putting together that whole process right now. I know the city clerk's not on the call tonight, but one of the things that she is concerned about is exactly what we just saw of people using video inappropriately or imagery and video inappropriately. So I know that she's working with other cities and towns and the city clerk's group to try to figure out best practices of how to bring hybrid meetings forward. So we'll continue to work on that and take the comment. And then on, on 5D, this is a, bringing back an item that the council spent quite a bit of time on at the last city council meeting on ADUs and going through all of the rationale of why those narrow streets aren't, aren't part of the ADU, the ordinance that was ultimately adopted, particularly after conferring with HCD. So this item is more of the, I think of it as a formality, but it's coming back to the council for the second reading of a conversation that you've already had in depth at your last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council on either of those items? I think it was explained very clearly. Okay, so not seeing any. I would accept a motion for those two items.
Okay, so I'll have a motion to accept from the consent calendar item 5A and 5D.
One second. Great, moved in second. A roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. We're through the consent agenda. We are going to take a five-minute break. I want to check in with staff. I, again, am deeply dismayed by what occurred, and we want to make sure that the public that has good, appropriate, and relevant input participate going forward. And we need to figure that out offline. So five-minute break, we'll come back at, what is that, 7:52? And our cameras will be off until then. Thank you. Welcome back to the Seminole City Council meeting. We took a short break to figure out how to manage public comment for the rest of this evening. It appears we've been targeted with some folks promoting hate speech, which we will not tolerate. So to that end, public comment for the rest of this evening will still be received, but through email only. And we'll turn it over to the deputy city clerk in a moment. She will give her email address once or twice, very slowly. And if you have any public comment, please email her. It will be read into the record. And that is how we will receive public expression for the remaining items. So Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. If you would like to email me your comments, please email it to city.clerk@cityofsemilofel.org.
Okay, city.clerk@cityofsemilofel.org. So if you are interested in commenting on the public hearing, which is Marin Sanitary Service rates or the downtown business improvement district or the AT&amp;T encroachment permit, you can go ahead and put in public comment at any time before those items. Okay. So with that, I will turn it over to Cory Bitoff, our Sustainability Program Manager, to talk about Marin Sanitary Service rates and contract for 2022. Welcome, Cory.
Hi, welcome. Nice to see you. Let me pull up my presentation for you. Everybody see that okay? Great.
We sure can.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you. This is our annual Marin Sanitary Service rate setting, and we also have an amendment to the franchise agreement for you tonight. So we have four basic items on the agenda. First, we'll go over the rate review, and we have Garth Schultz here from R3 Consulting Group to tell you about that. Then I'll dig into the illegal dumping pilot program, give you an update and proposal for this coming year. We'll talk a little bit about SB 1383 and the amendment to the franchise agreement. And then we can open it up for your questions, public hearing, and hopefully adoption and two resolutions. So some background, which is spelled out in your staff report, we're allowed to regulate service. Main thing is we work with all the other jurisdictions and Marin Sanitary Service together to make sure that it is as clear and similar across all the jurisdictions as possible and to leverage our work together as a collaborative. It's a, the rate setting is an annual contractual agreement. It's based on a methodology that Garth will go into a little bit more in detail. And the main thing is just, as you know, Marin Sanitary is kind of at the forefront of sustainability and diversion. And they consider themselves a resource recovery operation. So it's trying to pull that recycling out, pull up the compost, all the organics, and make sure that as little as possible goes to the landfill and instead is brought to its highest and best uses. And then the rates, as well as the programs and the contract and the amendment, all often relate to state laws such as SB 1383, which we'll be talking about momentarily. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the Garth Schultz. And Garth, you can just tell me when to bring the slides for Garth's with R3 Consulting Group, Inc. They're our third-party independent rate reviewer for the rates every year, and they also help us with a lot of other Marin Sanitary programs and analyses. Take it away, Garth.
Thank you very much, Cory. And good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. By way of self-introduction, so not only do we support the city of San Rafael and the other six Marin Sanitary Service franchising agencies in Marin County, we work exclusively for local government agencies up and down the state on matters relating to recycling policy, contracting, state compliance. So though my report here this evening is with respect to our review of Marin Sanitary Services rate application, we work at your behest and the behest of the rate payers and not for the company. Next slide. So this is what I'll cover, the methodology, which you've heard a couple different times. This is the third year of the indexed rate adjustment methodology that the council approved back in 2019 with input from a subcommittee of the council, including the mayor and vice mayor. We'll give you a summary of the adjustments for the 2022 rates that we reviewed, and then a snapshot of where San Rafael stands in relationship to other comparable agencies in Marin County. Next slide, please.
Great, and I want to interrupt just briefly. I also want to just note that in the rate review report, there was one page that was inadvertently left off, and I'm hoping Brenna will post that in the chat at some point. It's the Bay Area Rate Survey. And when the report was edited and re-submitted, it got inadvertently left off. So we should post that to the chat for everybody.
Thank you, Cory. Okay, so there's an exhibit to the agreement with Marin Sanitary Service, which was approved by the council in 2019, which changed the rate adjustment methodology. That is an annual adjustment to include an indexed rate adjustment that essentially continues in perpetuity until either Marin Sanitary Service or the city call for a cost-based adjustment. So one of the differences for this methodology compared to prior rate adjustments that the city had prior to 2019 is it really is a revenue control mechanism, regulating the revenues that rate payers pay Marin Sanitary Service. And for most of the costs, aren't based on direct costs of the company. Rather, those are tied to an external market index. So it's a streamlined methodology that achieves transparent, predictable rate adjustments. And in this third year, we're happy to say it continues to be successful in its application. So in these five subbullets, there's five broad categories that are adjusted in terms of rate revenues through this methodology on an annual basis. The largest of them is the compensation to Marin Sanitary Service for its collection operations. Those operations being, of course, the collection of garbage and organics and recycling from residents and businesses throughout the city, comprising nearly two-thirds of the overall revenue compensation to Marin Sanitary Service. That component of the rate is adjusted based on a nationwide Bureau of Labor Statistics Market Index. Essentially, it's a CPI for water, sewer, and trash utilities. You'll see it referred to in the next slide as WST for that reason. And it is tied to what the cost increases are on a national scale. Again, so not based on their individual costs, and it's roughly two-thirds of the overall rate. The next component is for post-collection processing and disposal, namely, that's the landfilling, organics, composting, or recycling of the material that MSS collects from your residents and businesses. That comprises 11% of the overall rate, and thus rate revenue compensation to Marin Sanitary. And the way it's adjusted annually is in response to two factors. One is the number of tons they're collected, and then two, the price per ton in terms of the disposal or tipping of those materials. A third component, which is introduced this year, is in response to SB 1383 compliance. That's approximately 1% of the rate revenues. And it's negotiated and adjusted based on need. And this year, it's comprised of a few different elements, which we'll cover in the next slide. There is a component of the rate revenue for operating profit or operating margin to Marin Sanitary Service, which is approximately 8% of overall rate revenues. And it is adjusted in accordance with changes in the overall amount of revenues paid to the company. It's important to note that this is not guaranteed. It's not a guaranteed profit achievement. It's, it's an allowance in the rate to allow for a reasonable profit to the company. Of course, if they don't control their expenses well, that profit margin will be less than desired or targeted by the company. And if they control their, their costs well, then they can achieve that profit margin. And then a final component of the rate overall is government fees. It's about 16% of overall rate revenues. That's comprised of the city's franchise fee, the vehicle impact fee, which was increased in a three-stepwise fashion, starting with last year and the report that we made to the council at that time, as well as funding for things like the illegal dumping pilot program and fees recovered by Marin Sanitary for payment to Zero Waste Marin, which is the hazardous and zero-waste joint powers authority, of which the city of San Rafael is also a member. Next slide, please. So we've got two slides, one covering kind of the factors leading to increases in the rate this year, but also some mitigating factors. Credits or adjustments downward in the rate in response to a in response to a few different factors. So that MSS collection operations component, again, remember that's about two-thirds of the overall rate, adjusted per that WST, Water Sewer Trash Index. It's increased by 3.57% this year. That's in accordance with that WST CPI. For the other components, in terms of increases, the state compliance, that approximate 1% of the overall rate revenue is around $264,000 in new revenues to MSS. Supporting area-wide increases in organic waste collection, that's to help implement the requirements of SB 1383, which we'll cover at a separate part of this presentation and also in a separate matter coming to the council in future weeks. It'll also cover a share of outreach and education that the company does, and it does a large amount of already, but there's increasing amounts of outreach and education to solid waste and organic waste generators throughout the entire seven-member agency service area, as well as things like a compliance tracking base that the state agency that implements SB 1383 does require robust reporting and tracking of a wide variety of figures relating to new organics collection and services. It also covers amounts of consulting support to help the city of San Rafael and the other franchisers stay in line with the state's expectations for reporting and tracking and implementation of the law. The operating component, profit component, increases overall with changes in the other costs. So that is projected to increase by 3.11% for this coming 2022 rate year. And then the final two factors leading to increases in the overall rate are related to government fees. The Zero Waste Marin Fees component is actually down for 2022 compared to 2021. And that is relating to a prior correction in the methodology that was implemented last year. So it's actually being set to actual for this coming year. Your franchise fee, which is a percentage of overall rate revenues, adjusts up and down depending upon what your rates do, because it is a percentage of rate funding. And then there, and that's going up by 2.39%, which is the overall amount of rate increase for this year. As I mentioned previously, the council last year approved an increase to the refuse vehicle impact fee paid by MSS to the city to pay for maintenance and repair on the city's roadways. That's increasing by $345,000 this year. This is the second year of increases at that level, with next year being the final increase, leading to the final refuse vehicle impact fee, which was the subject of a report to the council last year. And then finally, proposed illegal dumping funding of $104,000 for the coming year to implement pilots, which Corey will cover in a moment. Next slide, please. Now, there are a number of credits or adjustments downward to the rate for this coming year for post-collection, meaning garbage, landfilling, organics, composting, recyclables processing. Each of those are down overall. Garbage and organics tipping fees, the tipping fees, the price per ton themselves are adjusted each year in accordance with that same market index I mentioned earlier. But overall, tons are down largely in response to the ongoing effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. And because that is a, you know, kind of tons a year in arrears, we use the last 12 months of tons to project the coming 12 months of tons. This may start to recover with economic recovery, though with any luck, we can get folks to actually adopt some, you know, better, less wasteful, solid waste behaviors in the future. But the result for garbage and organics tipping fees is a resulting decrease to that component. And then recycling tipping is also down, and that is in response to recovery in the recyclables commodities market. As the council may be aware, a few years ago, the Chinese national sword policy dramatically affected the revenue that could be achieved from the sale of recyclable materials on the global marketplace. The new rate methodology implemented a mechanism by which rate payers and the company share in the risks and reward of any recovery or fluctuation in that market. And I'm pleased to say that this year, there has been recovery in the market, which has led to a 45% decrease in the cost per ton for recycling for 2022. There are a few other credits to the rate, reductions in rate revenues. One of those, which some council members may remember from prior years, is a sunsetting of prior true-ups for things like fuel and oil and prior recycling losses and prior disposal true-ups. That's contributing a negative adjustment of 0.53%. There's also a revenue balancing account in the methodology. 2020 was a rough year for everyone. For MSS, it resulted in an area-wide, meaning across all seven-member agencies or franchising agencies, a $1.5 million shortfall in revenues compared to expected revenue inbound. However, the company's waiving that balancing as applied to the rates, yielding a 0.35% reduction in the otherwise needed rate adjustment for this year. And that has to do with the fact that the company received and expects to be forgiven on a PPP loan to retain their employees during the course of the pandemic, which they did. And then there's another item relating to recycling property concerns, which is also a credit to the rate payer. So all told, approximately 1% additional reductions in rate revenues beyond just the post-collection decreases. What that means for the city's rate payers is a 2.39% increase in rates effective January 1 for residential 32-gallon customers, which is the most common size of residential customer. It's just over a dollar a month. And you can see the change from 45.75 to 46.84 for the new year. For commercial customers, which there are a wide variety of potential outcomes, but this is just an example, that corresponds to an increase of just over $13.50 per month. I think that is my last slide, Corey. I'll pass it back to you, and council happy to take questions at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Garth.
Forgive me, yes, I forgot that we had this one. We did conduct that survey of the rates, comparable rates for agencies amongst the various agencies shown here. As you can see, the average rate for the monthly 32-gallon is just above $51 a month. San Rafael smack dab in the middle of the pack with the resulting rate adjustment or resulting rate for 2022 of 46.84 a month. And with that, I do conclude. Sorry, Corey, back to you.
Thank you. One of the other things that Garth mentioned in the rates is this proposed illegal dumping program, our third year. So as you may remember, this is, we've had two years now, where we use a portion of the proposed rate to try to work on projects that can help us understand and solve our problem with illegal dumping, which is directly related to garbage and recycling in San Rafael. So a little background, and then we'll go into what we did last year, and then a little bit about what we learned and where we think we should be going this year. So we have roughly 250 to 350 reports of illegal dumping a year. And it costs the city over $250,000 a year. And this is mainly Public Works street staff time, going out and picking all this stuff up. They spend roughly one day, their five days a week, dealing with illegal dumping and litter. Doesn't even include the cost of the disposal. The majority of items are landfills. There's not a lot of recovery or recycling going on there. And half of our residents, we learned early on, don't even have access to both the item disposals. So if you're in a single-family home, you can call Marin Sanitary twice a year and have them collect a bulky item at your curb side. But it's way more complicated for multifamily units. And we principally don't have a pickup service for that. The other thing is that we developed this Together San Rafael team a few years ago, a cross-departmental team that started to work on this. We have some fantastic people from police, public works, code enforcement, sustainability, including our fellows every year. And last year, we initiated a big hairy audacious goal of trying to reduce illegal dumping 50% by 2025. And that's served to spur us all into action to look for innovative solutions and to make it more of a priority on our place every year as well. So in 2021, what did we do in our second year of pilots? We expanded our free bulky waste disposal events to another neighborhood. We did one at Pickleweed Park and one at Jackson's Hardware. We were trying to get into the places where we have the most multifamily units. It's a great day. It's a couple of big dumpsters Marin Sanitary provides. We have Conservation Corps out there helping get people stuff. They interview people as well, so we get some data that way, what's working, what's not working, whether people appreciate it or not, understanding where people are coming from. We did some hotspot campaigns. Public Works told us where their hotspots were, and we verified that with some data. And we went out and started to interview people. We drew big circles around the hotspots and started to interview all the apartment managers and did some specific outreach in those neighborhoods. We provided free dump coupons for the commercial victims of illegal dumping, where we said basically, look, I'm sorry you got dumped on. Here's a coupon, you can get it to the, you know, to try to get us some information. We tried to understand if there's any vehicle license plate and that type of stuff. We had mini-grants for dumping prevention, helping people with crime prevention through environmental design. So that's putting up motion-sensored lights, or maybe installing a fence or a gate across their driveway. And then we also did a lot of partnerships, and we leveraged our funding with the Mattress Recycling Council. And that's why we have a little leftover funds from last year that we're proposing bringing forward this year. The other thing we did was, the year before, you may have remembered, we put together this great story map online. Our fellow Travis put that up online. And then he started working this year with digital and put together this illegal dumping dashboard for us to really understand the data. And one of the cool things this year is Public Works and Thomas Wong worked for Public Works to get a new app together. So when they pick up the stuff, they track it as well, location, the type of material, the amount of material. So now we used to have just reporting data, now we've got actual data on the ground as well. So this is our first year of really getting that baseline data. And what we started to understand too is we broke it down into two types of dumping, illicit and casual. Illicit is the type that you might think about most often. And that's when somebody might, maybe they get paid and they rent a truck, or they get a truck and they take something out in an alley or dark street at night and they dump it down Lingwood Way or something. And then there's the casual dumping, and that's the stuff that just put out next to apartment complexes. May have a free sign on it, might not have a free sign on it. In any case, they put it on the street and the city picks it up. And then there's the third type, which is the homeless-related trash. And that's a very different situation. First of all, they're not tied to having a dumpster or a trash can at their property or anything like that. So it's a different thing, and it's, could be dumping, could be just a lot of trash. It's a little different animal. So we're focusing on the first two. So to the date that I put this, so the end of November-ish, we had about 431 pickups in San Rafael. I want to ask you what you think. What percentage do you think was illicit? And what percentage do you think was casual? Keep that in your mind. Just under 10% was actually illicit dumping. The vast majority of it is picking up their apartment complexes and places where we have the most multifamily units in San Rafael. Now, take this with a little grain of salt. This is from what Public Works picks up. So if we were to really get some good data on private property dumping, it may be a little higher, a little lower as well, but that's roughly it. So we focus more of our attention on those casual dumpers right now. And that's what we're trying to do, is provide options for people to, in a large part, through the Marin Sanitary pilots. So who is this casual dumper? So this year, we started to really think it through and started through these hotspot campaigns, talking to apartment managers and people on the street. Started to identify that there's three basic types. You've got the folks that are on the lease. They tend to be connected to the community. They've been around a long time, they're going to be around a long time. You've got the subletters, which don't typically have that profile. It might be renting a couch or renting a space on the floor. And we have a lot of subletters in San Rafael, so we can afford to live there. And then we've got apartment managers, and they contribute to the problem as well. We know a lot of apartment managers, and there's a big bunch of stuff that puts on their property. They just kind of move it off to the street. So we started to understand that, and that's what we want to start to investigate a little bit more. What works for these different types of people? How do you get to them? How do you get them to understand what we're offering or not? And then, so some of the other outcomes were that we realized that events are more effective and cost-effective than vouchers. People enjoy the events, they want more of them. Relationships, we started to build with community and property managers, which is going to be really important with our research with other cities. They found that to be super important. We found that some places surveillance cameras work really well. And you put up a surveillance camera and the dumping goes away. And other spots, they don't work so well. And it really depends on traffic patterns and all sorts of things. And then predictability is important. One thing we understood after this year was that people get their information in many different ways, and people misinformation, no matter how many ways you put it out there. If you can have predictability and people know that this is the norm, every Saturday, fourth Saturday of every month, that that type of thing starts to penetrate community knowledge and understanding, and that can be very helpful. And then we did some research and started to look at shopping cart ordinance, which I know Anna Santiago and her crew are working on right now, talking to some of you about. And we also learned that transportation is still an issue. We're not really getting at that transportation issue. And we've been hearing that enforcement, or at least the threat of enforcement, needs to accompany any kind of actions that we do, no matter where it is. Finally, minimum service levels. We have apartment complexes. R3 did an analysis and found that we have a lot of apartment complexes that don't have what our current minimum service level for trash services. And we're also seeing that public trash cans near them are filled with bags of trash from apartment units. So we're getting a couple of impacts there. And we have to understand, is the amount of service that we're even requiring adequate when you think about 12 to 15 people per unit? And we have a lot of community members that need your help. So this is just a smattering of the folks on our team right now, including consultants and Conservation Corps. We also have some volunteers, which some of you know, I know, multicultural center in Marin, and we'll be working more with these groups and with others as we expand. So the proposal is really to expand the bulky item days. Go from six to 12, make one a month, every month, same weekend, same time, same location. People also find out about it when they drive by or through community connections. So when it starts to happen and they start to know that it's there as well. Develop an on-call pickup pilot, try to get that transportation issue again. Expand the hotspot campaigns, do some more hotspot campaigns, and start to include more surveillance cameras and enforcement with those hotspot campaigns. Engage the community in data collection and solution development. So we're going to have a CCRC meeting, County Resilience Council meeting on December 15. And this will be a primary piece. And then we're doing a forum with the community in January as well. Analyze those minimum service levels, as well as the impacts, the impacts to the rate or the impacts to the rate payers in the apartment complexes. And then revise and develop educational materials. We thought we had some great educational materials, but boy, did we get an earful of that. Hmm, yeah, this is a great Castilian Spanish, but maybe you can do a little bit better. And then continue mini-grants for the business prevention efforts. It's just really a nice thing to offer. It's not like it's a big uptake, but having that available for folks really helps. And what we're doing is starting to get everybody to understand that they can protect their property. So a lot there. We'll get some questions in just a minute. I want to go through SB 1383 quickly and the franchise agreement amendment, since that's one of the items for you. So why did SB 1383 come about? It came about several years ago with the recognition that a lot of what goes into landfill is organics. And organics decompose a landfill and create methane, and that's a very potent greenhouse gas. Matter of fact, it can get to 80 times more potent than carbon dioxide. And the other thing is that there's edible food going into landfill. So we have people with food insecurity, so it's an attempt to get at that. It's arguably the largest or the most impactful law related to refuse in California history. It's an unfunded mandate. It's at statewide targets. It has lots of requirements and mandates. It's going to require us to have an ordinance update and have provisions for enforcement for our local businesses and generators of organic materials. And it mandates a lot from Marin Sanitary as well. Here's some of the local agency responsibilities. We need to make sure that organics collection is available to all. Some Marin Sanitaries, you can get their services for that. We need to establish and make sure there's access to capacity for edible food recovery. We need to do a lot of community education and outreach. And again, we'll rely on Marin Sanitary for that. They're way better at it than we are. We'll need to procure the recyclable or recoverable organics materials in the form of compost, mulch, and other things, to the tune of 100 to 130 times more than we currently use or can use. So that's going to be a big part of our work going forward. And then there's going to be a lot of monitoring, compliance reporting, and enforcement as well. And so our next steps tonight is the amendment. Then in January, February, we'll bring a mini-code update to you. Then we have to start our first reporting in April, then October is the next reporting, and then annual reports starting August 1. And then the enforcement on our end wouldn't start till January 1, 2024. So there's a couple of years for people to get on board and for us to do that education outreach and capacity planning. And then there's tiers in terms of different types of generators. They're very, they're big edible food generators that have to start to, start to defer that to nonprofits like Extra Fruit. So the franchise amendment, agreement, or the amendment to the agreement tonight is really about things that are required in SB 1383. It's making sure the lids and containers and the signage is all similar across the state. So Marin Sanitary adjusting that, some expanding their service, doing route reviews, compliance reviews, helping us with waivers and verifying that a waiver is okay, doing education outreach. And then a lot of documentation or reporting, to which Garth's point about the software that they use, which we're really hoping that we can utilize as well. And we'll be relying on Marin Sanitary to help us with a lot of that reporting. So that's SB 1383. So at this point, we can open it up for questions and answers about the two items on the agenda. One is the proposed rate adjustment of 2.39%. In addition, including the addition of the illegal dumping program with the approximate $1.09 per month for the most common residential and 13.51 per month in increase for the most common commercial. And then the adoption of the Fourth Amendment, and then the restatement of the collection agreement with Marin Sanitary. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey, and thank you, Garth. So right now, we'll start with questions on either the rate adjustment, illegal dumping, which, boy, that's a lot of information. I have a few questions, and then AV 1383. So maybe if you stop screen sharing so we can see each other. And if we need any other information, we'll have you pull it back up. I'll start with the Vice Mayor. Do you have questions on any of the items? And then we'll read in the public comment, and then we'll come back for comments from the council after, so.
Okay, questions? Because I've been working with Corey on this, I am fully informed and have no questions, but have some unhappy comments to make when that is an appropriate time.
Okay, that sounds good. Councilmember Kurtz, any questions?
No, no questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Yuren Skoladi.
No questions. I'll have some comments as well. Thank you.
We're going to dig deep in the comment section. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I had clarifying questions, but I wanted to just surface them for the sake of public having access to them. With the, actually, I'm not going to go there because I actually think you presented that in the presentation. I am curious because it is, it does look like with how we handle waste, we're not really necessarily, it's not necessarily part of the charter. But are we addressing in in terms of how people consume the overall waste lifecycle and consumption lifecycle? There's kind of more upstream considerations in terms of behaviors of consumers. Is there anything looking to the future around how we start to make some changes in that direction?
Well, that is, that's the million dollar question with greenhouse gas emissions too. As I think you know, that if you do a consumption based inventory, our carbon footprint is way higher than you would with the normal way that we do an inventory. Because that's, that's the crux of it. I would say that that's something in our climate action plan that we try to communicate and message a lot. It's not something we have a lot of control over, but it's certainly important. I have people I know in my family that are so proud because they compost, but then, but they go to Costco and they get so much stuff and it rots because they don't need all. So I told them, we're there with you. I don't have any brilliant plan for that right now. But I think it's something that we always try to message every time we talk about greenhouse gas emissions. We talked about, you know, the mega watt, the watt that you don't use or, you know, consumption and curbing consumption. It goes back to that whole basic conservation message. So I appreciate you raising it. I wish I had a better answer for you on that.
I totally appreciate that. It's not, yeah, there's no, there's no magic button on that one. But I think it's one that I think, you know, I'd look to the future to see what we can do and what other communities are doing around that. Thank you.
Thank you. The only question I had, as like the vice mayor, I've been very well aware of the MSS rate adjustments. I don't have any questions on that. The only question I had is on that unfunded mandate, AB thirteen eighty-three. And I do know you, you had a nice timeline that talked about when we have to adopt the ordinance. I think it was in January twenty twenty-two and then February twenty twenty-two. I want to ask you about enforcement though. I know that there are parts of that, us having to take in lots of compost. I mean, there are facets of it that are going to be very challenging. Thank God we have MSS as well as our other community partners to work with it. But could you speak to it? You had said, I saw a twenty twenty-four date on there. But, I mean, we're working towards it. So it's not that we're going to shirk our duties, but I'm, it is a big lift for our community. So could you speak to that?
Sure. We are working with Zero Waste Marin, the county and the other Marin sanitary franchises to try to understand what is the best way to go ahead and do that. And we talked to Anna Santiago and code enforcement as well about the idea of shared services and seeing if we can do something where we can fund somebody that maybe does outreach and enforcement, maybe akin to how we do it with home hardening and some of the wildfire prevention and regulations. So, so that's something that we're looking at. We don't have that solved yet. We considered bringing forward a fee this year that would help fund some of that. But in conversations with our council subcommittee, decided that maybe we should actually spend this year understanding a little bit better what we actually do think we need as well to figure out if the procurement requirements, if we need to fund that through it as well. So we're going to spend this year really trying to understand what is the best way to do that, the most cost efficient way. And we do have until January twenty twenty-four to enforce. So we can learn a little bit about where the real sticking points are and where that enforcement needs to be targeted. So it can be, it's not willy nilly, but it's complying with the law, but also doing it in a way that's, that makes the most sense for our community.
Yeah, I love the idea of a shared position across all, because we're all facing the same thing. And as, you know, fixed term, I think that's a really probably necessary something to explore further. So that was my only questions. Like everyone else, I have additional comments, but I, right now, will invite the deputy city attorney, excuse me, city clerk, excuse me, to read any comments that she has received via email.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I did receive a couple.
Okay.
Okay, this is Bill Carney from Sustainable San Rafael. Sustainable San Rafael welcomes the city's progress towards reducing methane emissions from landfill by requiring residents and businesses to properly dispose of organic materials and green carts. At last count, the emissions amounted to four percent of our community's greenhouse gas emissions, a relatively small portion of our contribution to climate change, but one that municipal regulation can dramatically reduce. The proposed changes to the Marin sanitary service contract will support this effort by providing green carts to all MSS customers, educating everyone on their use and monitoring for compliance and contamination. We urge you to rapidly put teeth in these efforts by codifying the requirement for organics relying, recycling early in twenty twenty-two in accordance with SB thirteen eighty-three. The Marin Biomass Collaborative developed in collaboration with Drawdown Marin, the Marin Conservation Resource District, Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, Organizing for Action, Sustainable San Rafael, Marin Conservation League and others stand ready to assist. We are working with the governor's office of planning and research to develop Marin specific recommendations for economically feasible, climate supportive means of processing and utilizing household yard and wildland organics once collected. MSS has been a partner in these efforts and we look forward to mutually beneficial results. Thank you for your efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in San Rafael by all means within the city's power as we grapple with the ongoing emergency of climate change. And then I am Belle Cole, Chair of OFA Marin and Lead of the Marin Biomass Project. I want to support the letter you received from Bill Carney, President of Sustainable San Rafael, urging you to follow up on the changes to the MSS contract by codifying the requirement for organics recycling early in twenty twenty-two. We support the approach outlined in the staff report for meeting SB thirteen eighty-three requirements, bringing a municipal code update to council early in twenty twenty-two, which will establish mandates for organics recycling by waste generators and will also provide for penalties and documentation as required by the law. Setting forth an implementation plan, including a plan to meet annual organic waste product procurement mandates from the state, implementing the spirit of the law and seeking creative ways to ensure highest and best uses of the material created locally. From perspective of the Marin Biomass Project, these are welcome commitments. The Marin Biomass Study will analyze the wide range of existing and potential pathways for processing biomass and converting it to the useful products in ways that are both economically sound and ecologically responsible. It seeks to catalyze a sustainable circular bioeconomy in Marin. It will do so in a collaborative manner that helps build cooperation among the public and private stakeholders that operate and oversee the biomass utilization economy so that optimal solutions can be quickly implemented. MSS is a valued partner in this regard. Among the benefits for Marin and especially for resource managers like MSS are marketable options like compost, mulches and biochar for use on the local gardens and agricultural landscapes. Cryolysis, gasification for electricity, biochar and/or hydrogen, increased anaerobic digestion of organics for electricity and agricultural soil amendments and diversified wood products, among others. Working with the governor's office of planning and research, the city and MSS, we hope to provide useful solutions for handling organic materials. Thank you for responding to these challenges, countess them to assist your efforts. Belle Cole. Marin sanitary service is here today, available for any questions. This is from Justin Wilcock. We have Patty and Joe Garberino, along with our CFO, Jason Raleigh, Government Affairs Manager, Ruben Hernandez and Director of Operations, Justin Wilcock. We continue to be grateful to the city of San Rafael for our partnership and for the opportunity to collect waste materials within the city and process them to their highest and best use. We are optimistic in our ability to implement the SB thirteen eighty-three requirements that are included in the amendment tonight. We thank the council for hearing our review and our ability to continue offering the services we do. And that are all the emails that I received.
Thank you so much, Brenna. Appreciate that input. So vice mayor, I'm sure we all have comments. And we had received the letter from both Bill Carney and from Belle Cole. So it was nice to have those referenced. Go ahead, vice mayor.
Thank you. Two comments, both of them in the in the nature of complimentary comments. My first comment is about the index system. When we adopted it, it's convoluted, it's complicated, it was a risk. We didn't know how it would turn out. And, and we said that, you know, some years it's going to be more than inflation, other years it's going to be less. This is a year that it's less. We've experienced the more, I just want to shine a spotlight on it, that the index is working. It's an easy, understandable system. It gives predictability and it allows us to focus on other issues rather than having to go pouring through every line item in the budget every year. So thumbs up on the index system, particularly, which is particularly easy when it brings us in under inflation for an increase. So that's a, that's a big win, I think, for us. The other big win that I see and I really want to shine a spotlight on is sort of a different kind of spotlight. And that is the illegal dumping program and the analysis that went into it. And sometimes we're confronted with a problem and we all think we know what the answer is. And, and it turns out here that it's not. And the way we know that is because our staff has undertaken a rigorous fact-based analysis of what exactly is causing all the, these stuff. Where, where does the path lead back? And that analysis is showing that we have a, an issue with multifamily housing supplying enough, enough collection, vehicles or dumpsters, if you will. And we need, we need to rethink that. But we, the foundation that enables us to get to that position is the nuts and bolts of staff work being done in detail. Analyzing, collecting each time, you know, DPW, each time they pick up something, they, they record what it looks like. And until we got that, that analysis, we're not in a position to really lead us to the actual core of this problem where we can propose a solution that will actually work because we know what, what the actual problem is. So I, I think I'm very pleased at the level of analysis that has gone into this, into the illegal dumping of a program so that we can target something that will ultimately be a, a solution. And I really encourage us to get started on the outreach to the apartment managers, to get started, bringing them along in this process. Because the many people who live in, in multifamily housing have a tremendous impact on their quality of life when they don't have regular garbage disposal and it's not, and it's not collected in a timely way. And there's rodents, the, the whole thing is a, detracts from a quality of life. And I think we have a pretty good idea of where, where we need to go. And I encourage us to move as, as, as fast as possible. But stick, stick, adhere to our standards of, of good, solid analysis. That's it. And I would support approving the, the rate increase as well as the contract amendment.
Okay, thank you. We'll have to read, I think there are three separate actions. So we will get to that. But first, Councilmember Hill.
Yes, thank you, mayor. And I concur, as I often do with the vice mayor's comments. I would just add, I do see this, said in a different way, building on what she said, as a motion of equity. And I think that this is an outstanding way to move that forward. Yes, very much couched in analysis and intentionality. Lean into what works, learn from what we didn't, and let's keep going forward. And I support in, in the report that was given just now and in the staff report itself, the, the rate increase is appropriate and well appointed. So thank you for that. And I will be supporting the motion as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, Corey, thank you for the update. It's so helpful. I would say with SB thirteen eighty-three, there seems to be a bit of a moving target because we're seeing new legislation coming through, like with SB three forty-three, which is now changing the use of the chasing arrows. So, which is gonna, I mean, so we're just seeing sort of a moving target where we're establishing a plan with thirteen eighty-three. But I'm concerned that, that the rules are going to be changing as well. So it's going to be hard to figure out what we're doing with that. And maybe what that's saying is that we need to look at coming back more frequently over the next couple of years to see how we can help in terms of moving this forward. Because I think, I appreciate the indexing. I appreciate the rate increase. I think we might need to actually look at doing more. I don't know what that looks like because I, I don't know if it's once a year that we're, we're adjusting this is really going to support the need that we need to support thirteen eighty-three. I think it's imposing a lot more requirements. And I'm not sure at the time when the indexing was established was thirteen eighty-three in anyone's radar around that. And so what do we need to think about going forward in support of it? For our businesses, for our organizations, for our sanitary service, for everything. So I think there's a lot there. Absolutely do support this. With the caveat, I think we're going to probably have to do more.
Well, the state definitely keeps asking us to do more. So you're right in that. Excellent points as, as it continues to evolve. Councilmember Yuren Skoladi.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kate. Really want to also thank Corey and the work that his department has done, all the different analysis, like setting up like different cameras and trying different things and being proactive. I am so thankful to have you and everybody in the department as well, working on that. In every conversation we have with the community, the, I would say probably the top complaint right now is around garbage. And so I completely agree with Vice Mayor Bushy, you know, around the need that we have. It is unhealthy and especially in the multifamily apartments, there's not enough capacity. So how can we work around that? So I'm really thrilled to see, you know, that we are going to have, have it like once a month at the specific places, maybe like at the pilot that comes to pick up the garbage. Just thinking about, you know, people that there are most people in my district in multifamily apartments, they rent. And, and there's movement as well. So every time you, you move, you have all these things that you don't know what to do with it. So it's always a great idea to, to provide that service. I, I would say yes, in terms of education, I'm very happy we are including that. And Corey, you already know this, but I would say yes to work with the residents on the education parts because I think there is a lot of things that, that come out that sometimes people are not used to use certain ways, you know, to dispose of garbage. So I think it would be very important to partner with, you know, I know multicultural center is involved. Alcohol justice, does the, the Mingas on Saturdays once a month. They have one actually this Saturday to go and pick up garbage around the neighborhoods. You know, kind of alliance, we possibly kind of, so I think it would be great to partner with them in developing that educational part. And in terms of the new, you know, the new law, I would also love to see the support that we are going to offer the businesses, especially restaurants and takeout, because that's going to have a huge impact. And, you know, recovering from COVID is something that we desperately need, you know, just to reduce that waste. But how can we partner with, with this industry to make sure that they, they do the right thing, but they also feel supported? And that's it for me. And I absolutely, you know, I'm ready to approve this. So thank you.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent comments. And I know on thirteen eighty-three, because of the timeline, we will be discussing it again, I think in February. So. So as it evolves and there are additional laws, we will keep getting updates on that. I wanted to add, I thought the illegal dumping program, what has been done by the staff is amazing. And that's really an example of Together San Rafael, which is cross-departmental collaboration to solve an issue. And as the Vice Mayor said, we might have thought, oh, this is how we solve it. But we actually, in talking to all the different departments, as well as, as Mica just said, talking to the residents, to really find the solutions. When you said your first bullet point, 300 reports a year. And I'm like, aren't there 365 days? Like, that's almost a report every day. Like, that is just, that's a massive. And there is a real quality of life. And so what I'm hearing my colleagues say, and I think you will come back to us on this, is what, how do the programs for the multi-unit housing, how is that working? So maybe what we do is, we would love an update in whatever, it's six months, to see how the new programs. Because what I really heard is you had the data, you put in some, made some assumptions, you've done some of the program, but you're going to continue to go farther on that. So I agree, this is an issue that I get emails on quite frequently. So if we can have an update mid-year next year, that would be fantastic. And then finally, on the MSS rates, the Garberinos have been fantastic in terms of always pushing the envelope, in terms of being progressive and looking at new technologies and responding to how can we utilize the wastes that are, be it organic waste or non-organic waste that our community continues to create. And they have been phenomenal partners in that. And we're so lucky to have them as part of the team. So I really wanted to emphasize that and appreciate them. I know that they're watching as well. And so apologize if they're not able to give verbal public comment, but we appreciate the fact that they were able to write in. So with that, I would, oh, and I just want to also confirm, thank you to Sustainable San Rafael, our, and OFA, Organizing for Action, Bell Cole. Because it really is with our community partners, to Councilmember Hill's comments. When we're talking about consumption patterns and all of this, this is not the city is going to go solve that. This is working in collaboration and in partnership with all our CBOs, which is what our Climate Change Action Plan quarterly meetings that Councilmember Yorin Skulati chairs. That's the place for that. So we are very well clear that we are in this together. So I really appreciate the partnerships that are out there. So with that, I do see three, wait, is it three? No, two, two, that, two. So Vice Mayor, we should probably read it in, or have you read it in?
I'm happy to read it. I'll start with the first one. I move that we adopt a resolution establishing maximum rates collected by Marin Sanitary Service for Refuge and Recyclable Material Collection and Disposal Services to be effective January 1st, 2022.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorin Skulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. There's another one?
Yes, second one. I move that we adopt a resolution approving a fourth amendment to the amendment and restatement of collection agreement of the City of San Rafael with Marin Sanitary Service.
I'll second it. Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorin Skulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. And this item wouldn't be complete without a big heartfelt shout out to Cory Bidoff, who is amazing in the work that he does and to bring together all these different entities. So we are super grateful to you, Cory. So thank you so much. Okay, agenda item, 6B Downtown Business Improvement District Assessment Annual Renewal. I see Director O'Leary has joined us.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much. I'm excited to bring you the BID Annual Assessment and Report. Before I start, I wanted to let you know we are joined today by Ida Lochte, the Executive Director, as well as Jed Green, the interim president. So I'm going to shift to sharing my screen real quick and finding my presentation. Just give me one quick second.
Of course.
There we go. Share desktop. There we are.
Perfect.
Okay. So we wanted to start with a picture, kind of highlighting our beautiful Tivoli lighting and our dining under the lights as a cheerful way to kick off the annual recap. Tonight's presentation, you're going to see, we're going to just quickly review some of the BID accomplishments that were listed in the annual report. We're going to just go over briefly the boundary map and the formula assessment. We're going to confirm new BID board member appointments, open up a public hearing to receive public comment, and ideally adopt a resolution for fiscal year 2022 for the BID assessment. There were a lot of accomplishments, so I'm doing a summary. These past year and a half, two years with COVID have continued to be really a hard time for our small businesses. And the BID Board has really stepped up in a pretty dynamic way to address the needs on an ongoing daily basis. And so some of the things that you'll see here, we put first and foremost dining under the lights, which is a really key recovery program for restaurants, retailers, everybody who's really just trying to draw traffic down to the downtown and create this open-air experience for our residents and visitors to enjoy the outdoors and everything San Rafael has to offer. So this year, we completed our second year of programming of dining under the lights. And I've heard really great feedback about how important this program is. We've had to make adjustments along the way to meet different needs, but we are happy to report that we've completed our second year of this. The BID also took on some beautification initiatives in partnership with the city. The Tivoli decorative lighting that you saw in the opening picture, all the way down Fourth Street, has been a really welcome addition and a beautiful accent to the dining under the lights ambiance. We have new pole-mounted banners that you'll notice in the downtown area that kind of help place brands along Fourth Street that the BID worked with a designer and got those curated and produced. And the BID has also served as a really great partner in the parklet support. So on the on-street dining, working with the individual businesses to, you know, assess their needs, make changes, try to curate programming around it. So we really appreciate their partnership there. BID undertook website improvements. They put a new searchable business directory, which during COVID has been amazing, right? Really drawing our residents to connect with the individual businesses downtown, be able to see who's open, what's their hours and their offerings. So that's been a really valuable asset. Content curation all year long, showing what's the activities in the BID, how businesses can engage with the BID, as well as how visitors can engage and how our residents can engage. So they've been constantly maintaining that content along with search engine optimization because it's really important to be able to draw traffic to our downtown. Administrative improvements, they've updated their bylaws, which is great. They have been building board participation and undergone an executive director recruitment. Which I'll mention a little bit later, Ida will be retiring at the end of the year. Social media and marketing, they've provided year-round Instagram content and built quite a great following. They've been able to highlight local businesses through Instagram stories and other features and functions on Instagram, providing that additional marketing support our small businesses really need and appreciate. They've done digital ad campaigns, print ads in local newspapers, including the Marin IJ. And the city has been a partner along with the chamber on many of these efforts. They've also produced a lot of unique events and really taken into account the dynamics of COVID and how to have safe events. And so, you know, you've enjoyed D.O.D. Las Mortes was really wonderful, Sparkle and Cheer is coming up, Holiday Window Decorating Contest, Maid Madness, Trick or Treat on Fourth Street, and our Clean and Green Day during Earth Day, as well as supporting the Mill Valley Film Festival and doing some fun restaurant promotions when that was in town. Briefly, here's just a look, this was part of the council packet with the staff report. But here is the BID Business Improvement Map. You can see that the pink area is the premium assessment and the blue area is the standard. When we come to this, you'll be able to see kind of the differences in the assessment fees from a standard to a premium for retail ground floor, restaurant, personal service, and offices, as well as nonprofit and financial institutions. We are not recommending any increase in BID assessments. We realize it's been a very tough year, couple of years now for our small businesses with COVID. So we're keeping rates the same, being sensitive to those pressures. And then we want to just go over the BID roster. We've had some, some changes. We've got Jed Green, who has been serving as the treasurer. He's going to be stepping into the interim president role, so we really appreciate Jed for that. We've got Adam Dawson, serving as vice president, Erica Belker for our social media chair. She's done really amazing work on the Instagram feed. Jaime Ortiz is going to be continuing on as the event chair. He's been president now for four one-year terms, so we really owe Jaime a ton of gratitude. We've got Toby Lessum, serving as secretary, treasurer is still to be determined. And then the board members at large you see listed here, Elizabeth Seton from Artworks Downtown, Morgan Schelfer from Youth and Arts, Jeff Brusatti, TMB Sports, and Terrence Thornton from San Rafael Martial Arts. Tonight, we'll be confirming new board members at law, at large, Vishlam and Amy Bullock from Salon B. And we're super excited to have their energy and talents join the board. And I want to end with a really special thank you to both Ida and Jaime. Ida has been, held the executive director position with the BID before for 10 years in the 90s. And she is now re-retiring, so we promise we won't try to pull her back in, but she's been just wonderful. And so we really want to give a special thanks and shout out to Ida for all the work she's done during COVID, all the special outreach, care and attention. And as we mentioned, Jaime and his, really his strong stewardship in stabilizing the board during this time, building membership, getting bylaws updated, and really just being kind of a pillar and anchor to the BID Board. We want to thank him. We are grateful. He's still going to continue on as the event chair and be a part of it. And with that, I am going to exit. Stop share screen. And we have the ability to open up the public hearing, or if you'd like to before, hear any comments from Ida and Jed. They are available to counsel.
It would be fantastic to hear from Ida. I'm not sure if we're going to be, or Jed, I don't know. We'd have to ask the city clerk.
Thank you.
Hi, hi, Ida. So yeah, I mean, Danielle, Director O'Leary just did a fantastic presentation. I didn't know if there's anything that you wanted to add.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Kate and Vice Mayor and councilmembers for always being such great supporters and partners with the BID and with downtown. And also thank, a big thank you to Jaime, who, actually, I think it was five years, not just four, that he's been involved in doing it all. So he, he, he has been instrumental and he's going to take a backseat. And a big thank you to Jed, who just showed up because he's been a long-term treasurer as well. And he's now taking the helm, which is great, so that we'll have some continuity from some returning members. And we'll have some new members with new vitality. So it's great. So just want to thank you all for being great champions for downtown and for always supporting the BID.
Fantastic. Well, stay on. We might have questions. Jed, do you have anything? Welcome. If you would like to.
I just, you know, I do want to echo something that Director O'Leary did say and say my big thanks to Jaime and Ida. They've worked really hard for the past five years. Ida especially, in the last couple of years, has really taken on dining under the lights and worked tremendously, really hard to get that all operational and run smoothly. So a big, big thanks to you and Jaime.
Thank you. Well, thank you for stepping in. So I'd love any questions from my colleagues. And then, of course, as always, you'll have an opportunity to comment after we receive or after we listen to the emails. So any questions? Oh, yeah. So I'll go, Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and also for the great work that you do, especially Ida and Jaime. I mean, what are two years to, to be doing this? It's amazing and dining, you know, after the lights. But I don't know if I said that right. Anyway, under the lights, dining under the lights. Anyway, you know, I used to be a board member a long, long time ago when I had a restaurant. And I noticed that there are no restaurants on the board. So I know it's very hard to recruit people, but are you planning to reach out to some restaurants to see if they can bring their voice to the BID as well? And again, thank you so much.
We have reached out to restaurants and we are in major communications with the restaurants, especially the last two years more than any others. But in general, they are just too busy to actually be physically on the board. But we do, you know, take into consideration the restaurants greatly.
They have a lot going on right now.
Yeah, congratulations on recruiting a Salon B or B Salon. That's great that they are being part of that. So thank you.
And Terrence, actually, from San Rafael Martial Arts is a new member this year as well, but he was already on the board, but he is a new member.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And I think Director O'Leary can correct me if I'm incorrect, but I think there had been a restaurant focus group, so I think there, wasn't there a whole conversation, to your point? Mica, you're right, there hasn't been on the board, but I think Ida through the BID or through the chamber reached out specifically to the restaurants a couple of months ago to get the feedback that you were just talking about.
Yes, I was on that meeting.
Yes, we had Ida participate. These were part of the city chamber gem, going the extra mile focus groups. And we sat down with downtown restaurants and heard their feedback about the event, parklets, which we hope to transition into streeteries. We heard about staffing constraints, we heard about supply chain challenges for ingredients, I mean, the gambit. And I would say that right now, capacity has been hard for them. But we are constantly attuned and reaching out to them to make sure we can provide them the support needed.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, do you have any questions? So the only question I have, which is always tenuous when you're talking about finances, but I was reflecting upon the fact that the Vice Mayor and I, I think we were on the council when the BID was formed and that the assessment amounts and the sheer number of activities that you did this past year is unbelievable to me. It, the scope, so the money has stayed the same, but the scope and what you've been doing with it has expanded. And so, and it's not to be considered this evening, but as we look at the funding, I would be curious, I guess, I guess this is to Director O'Leary, if we were to increase the funding, because economic recovery is one of our four policy buckets for 2021 and 2022. Could you speak to that? What would that look like? What would the possible options be there?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. You know, there are a couple of different paths. The first could be an additional augment from the city through existing city revenues. Another option could be looking at American Rescue Plan funds for some type of like one-time bridge loan, you know, funding, not a loan, but bridge, bridge funding, while we look and consider increasing rates, if that'd be something that we want to explore. There could also be some capacity building for funding with grants that we might be able to look at. And so I think that there's like three strong avenues that certainly my team is committed to working with the BID as their key recovery partner. And I agree that it's a sensitive time right now to raise assessments and we, and we don't want to do that. So really looking at what can we do with the existing pie? How could we reallocate possibly some of that, look at maybe one-time American Rescue Funds, and then looking at maybe some grants could be another, another avenue.
Okay. Thank you for that. Jed, did you want to, oh, I wasn't sure. When people unmute, sometimes they're signaling they'd like to add in. Go ahead.
I'd just say that I think it's likely that we're going to create a fundraising committee that's going to look in and try to find out different ways to, to get extra revenue in. And one of the things we'll also be trying to focus on a little bit is corporate sponsorships. And try to see if we can get more corporate sponsorships in our events, or even in general, to try to get extra funding.
That's, that's a great suggestion. And I think too, with the granting, sometimes you can do matching funds. There's way for them to build off of each other. So look forward to those future conversations. So thank you. I will invite the deputy city clerk to read any emails that she's received for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I just want to announce that I have not received any emails on this item.
Okay, so I'm closing public comment and bringing it back for, I'm sure lots of accolades and praise, but I will start with the Vice Mayor.
Yes, accolades, accolades for sure. And just to step back for a minute, put this in historical context, you know, we created the BID in, you know, the, in normal times. You know, we created the BID in, you know, the, in, in normal times, just to address the sort of day-to-day regular things happening in downtown San Rafael. And then along came the global pandemic. And this organization that we created to do this little thing just stepped up and just rose to the challenge and took on these, you know, unprecedented, unimaginable issues and pivoted from one thing to the next, trying, was open to trying on all sorts of, of different possibilities, hit on the ones that win, that, that won for us and duplicated them right down of Fourth Street into Dining Under the Lights, as just one example. So it's, it's been an amazing organization that has really shown the depth of its commitment to San Rafael. So thank you for all that you've done, the, the amazing work that, that has been done and the amazing work that we know is, is coming in the future. I think, yes, it's time, it's time for more revenue to build on this. You've proven, you've proven your worth. Let's get more revenue in here and see what bigger and even more exciting things that, that you can do with more resources provided to you. So I will be voting to approve the continuation of the BID assessment.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, I want to echo Vice Mayor Bushy, the incredible work that you, that, I mean, that you do generally, but also like especially in the last two years. And, you know, downtown is, is, is the heart of San Rafael. Like you really make our city a place where, you know, people wants to go there and see the neighbors and, you know. So I, I, yes, really appreciate the organization, but also all the businesses. I can't even imagine the struggle that you had. And, and let us know how we can support you as well. I know that, you know, Director O'Leary is working with you very closely. But how, if you have ideas how to bring new businesses downtown? Or can we help you promote your events or whatever it is? I know that there is a lot of need right now and anything that we can do to help as well. A huge appreciation to you, especially Ida for coming back from retirement and then retiring again. Really appreciate you. And Jaime, I know he's not here tonight, but I know that he's amazing. So thank you.
Sure Jaime is watching, even if he's not on screen. Councilmember Kurtz.
I also echo everyone's thanks. Since I've been involved with the subcommittee for economic recovery and economic growth, it, you've been there really balancing the conversations from the community, from the need to bring in the vaccination. I don't know what you call it, outpost?
Global vaccine.
Global vaccine. It was amazing and, and you were able to work with the community in balancing all these needs and wants that were happening all the time. So we're going to miss you. Maybe you'll change your mind in a couple of months, but we'll see. And, but thank you and absolutely support the assessment that's happening here. We've, we're already seeing and we have seen the effectiveness of having this group and having a formed committee to be able to toss ideas, but also for that group to then reach out to us. And it really does work both ways and it's very, very helpful. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I'm going to build on what Councilmember Kurtz had said about being able to balance the conversation. I had the privilege to meet regularly with both Ida and Jaime. And what was impressive in every conversation was the level of commitment exhibited by both to moment by moment, adjust to the dynamics of the ever-changing roller coaster that we were on, not knowing what the track was going to look like ahead, if there was going to be track at all. And I was always impressed, just not just by the actions, but the integrity behind the actions and the focus on the outcomes. And the outcomes, there's never an end to this. This is a constant journey. I think you and Jaime have set a very high bar. I'm looking forward, I got to meet Jed a couple of weeks ago. But I think what I'm hearing is you have the support of, of this council and the community. And just building on what Mayor Kate implied with, or just directed with her question around, how are we able to accomplish so much with the limited resources? And I think it really does have to do with just the heart and the integrity of this organization. So Ida and Jaime, who's not here, just my deepest gratitude for, for teaching me something every time we met. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will add to the accolades. I was reflecting back, Ida, then when I did the Mayor Kate walkabouts in the beginning of the year and you and I were together on some of those and walking in. And it was very clear that you already had established relationships, which is what we needed during this time of crisis. And that you were not just jumping into it, you were already in it. People already knew you. So as you had the difficult conversations of what's a parklet? What's a streetery? Can I have, you know, as, as all the COVID restrictions came and went? And you were able to have a really steadying force and stalwart and helping to provide that framework for businesses. Because it was a really confusing time. And I am so grateful to you for leading. And of course Jaime, for again, being the five one-year terms. I love that, that's hilarious. And I'm really grateful that Jaime will be transitioning to the event, so he doesn't get totally away from us. I think I was at a, a party for him when they, we celebrated him stepping down for being the president. I think it was like two years ago. I'm like, wait, we never let him leave. But it was the same thing, having those established relationships. Because at the end of the day, as COVID turned our world upside down, it was a fact that we would, you would sit down, not we, you would sit down and collaborate and partner and figure out how are we going to go forward? And there were some hiccups. You know, we had one block that would have a band and then, then it was right next to loud next to the restaurant. Or we had the smoking barbecue and that bothered this other person. So there was a lot. For anyone who doesn't, hasn't looked behind the scenes, there was a lot that Ida and Jaime did to really say, okay, how can we make this work? Because we're going to have down, dining under the lights. We're not going to not have it. So how can we do it in a way that benefits our community? We wanted to come together and our businesses. And so we are so fortunate to have had you at the helm. We are going to miss you. Jed is stepping into a, a big shoes, but we know that again, the quality of the BID board just continues to be amazing. And welcome to the new board BID members. So look forward to having future, hey, it's always good conversation when you're like, hmm, how can we support you even more? So you hear the full support of the council behind you and I look forward to those conversations. And now we have the formal, formal part of the business. Vice Mayor, would you do the honors of reading in the agenda item?
Of course, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the downtown San Rafael Business Improvement District Assessment for calendar year 2022.
I'll second. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. We look forward to seeing all of you downtown and throughout San Rafael, in our restaurants and in our stores. So thank you so much, Ida. Thank you so much, Jed, and thank you, Jaime. Okay, we have one last item on our agenda. The resident appeal of an AT&amp;T encroachment permit. Director Garin, I see you on, and Rafat Ray. I will turn it over.
I'm simply going to introduce Rafat Ray.
Okay.
Bill Garin with Public Works. Rafat has a presentation about the appeal that's being made to AT&amp;T placing a box for their equipment near 109 Bayview. I believe also we have the resident and Lisa Morano from AT&amp;T is on as well to, to make comments. So thanks Rafat.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. My name is Rafat Ray. I hope you can see my screen all right.
I can't, maybe if you make it a little small. Is it just me? I see half of it.
Okay, let me see what I can do.
Maybe you resize it. There you go, that's better. Yep, perfect.
Better?
Yep, perfect.
All right. You know, we, in, in San Rafael, we issue hundreds of encroachment permits. Any work that is done by private or public entities in the right of way, we make sure that the infrastructure is restored and it's all governed by the municipal code section 1104, 030101. And there is a city, city council resolution specifically adopted on October 25, 2007, and establish standard specification requirements for the design installation of encroachment with, within the right of way. In, and that, we, we use these standards and specification to set the criteria to evaluate, review and approve encroachment permits. On June 21st, 21, AT&amp;T applied for an encroachment permit. And the permit is to include to place a fiber cabinet near the southwest corner of the intersection of Bayview and Day Street within the public right of way. We reviewed the design stack criteria established by the resolution and found that the application complied with the city's requirements and approved the issuance of the encroachment permit on July 16, 2021. The, during the installation or the exploration by AT&amp;T, the area, the property owner adjacent, Mr. Rich Pitavello, called the Department of Public Works and asked, inquired what's going on and expressed his concern about the cabinet, the fiber cabinet installation. City staff tried and connected Mr. Pitavello to AT&amp;T representative. The area manager, Lisa Morano, was involved. And AT&amp;T offered alternatives to, to placing that cabinet. The main concern by Richard Pitavello was that this is the third cabinet in front of his property. And AT&amp;T offered some alternatives. We talked through it and we could not reach to a, an acceptable resolution. Mr. Pitavello assisted to appeal and he will be, this is the appeal in front of the city council tonight. The city council will hear everybody from the appellant and from AT&amp;T for 10 minutes each. That is the process that will, will follow tonight. And, you know, the public hearing, this is a public hearing. It's a public meeting. We don't need to have a public hearing part of the agenda. And there is a resolution in the, in your packet to deny the appeal based on the fact that we could not reach a, a resolution and we don't have any grounds to deny the application by the AT, by AT&amp;T according to the design standards. However, the council has the option to direct staff to how to best handle the encroachment permit. And the council decision tonight, according to the resolution, is final. Here's a little bit more graphics as to what's going on. This is the existing condition. This is the main box in front of 109 Bayview. This is a secondary box and it's not an AT&amp;T box. It's, it's just a utility box in the right of way. The original application that we processed as an encroachment permit is to install a third box here, which is, this is the new fiber cabinets. And this is the proposed cabinet under the encroachment permit. This is one, two and three. They, the AT&amp;T offered a solution. Alternative number one is to resize this cabinet, repurpose it to take both the analog and fiber equipment in it. Keep doors swinging towards the street. And in order to do that, AT&amp;T insists on a 24-hour access to the box. And they required the removal of one parking space in front of these boxes. This is the alternative number one. The alternative number two was not to install the third cabinet and, and resize this cabinet and repurpose this, this cabinet and maybe turn the, turn the cabinet around so it can be accessed without the removal of the, the parking space. So it'll be access on the sides. Those are the alternatives. And we were hoping for a city council action. And these are the options. We can, the council may either adopt a resolution, deny the appeal, upholding the issuance of the encroachment permit, grant the appeal and direct staff to prepare a resolution for city council action, future meeting, or direct staff to return with more information or take no action. With that, I turn it to the council for questions and I'll stop sharing my screen.
Thank you, Rafat. I just had a question as this is a not usual action item. Historically, we will have questions from the council to you now. But as you said, because there's an appellate, Ms. Pitavello is on. So do we have him speak? Like what, what is the format? Because normally I'm thinking he would speak and then Ms. Morano, sorry, my class, Morano would speak as well. That's what you had said would be the outline. So it seems to me we'd have them speak before we would ask questions. Is that correct, city attorney?
I would agree that I would allow the appellate to speak next.
Okay. Just confirming, okay. So we will turn it over. Yes, Councilmember Mica.
Can I ask, yes, I've got a quick, sorry, a quick question. You mentioned that when you put a bigger box, the doors are going to be facing the road. So it will eliminate the parking space. I mean, I'm assuming that you already went through this, but if you switch the doors to the other side, to the sidewalk, do you still have to remove that parking space?
The, I'll let, I'll let Lisa speak to those alternatives. But my, my understanding is we want, need to eliminate the parking space with the options of opening the doors towards the landscape area.
So, so let's do this, because I think we might all have similar questions. Let's go ahead and have the appellate, appellate speak and then Ms. Morano. And then we'll, we'll add any questions that we have not already answered. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Rich. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much for your time this evening. I just want to give you my perspective from, from a homeowner. You're looking at, at, at several options here. One of the things that was not mentioned, along with the two boxes, is I have a vault there also. So I have three, three pieces of equipment in that area. Having a third box is not actually something that I'm looking for, for them to expand their footprint. Converting a box and losing a parking spot in an area where parking is really, really tight is not, I'm not crazy about that either. Actually, having the enlarged box, which is 10 feet, 10 feet in front of my front door. When you open up my front door, you will be looking at a box that is six by six. I worked with AT&amp;T for 10 years. And when they have a service that's 50% utilized, they automatically double the capacity. So you're looking at an upgrade now. They're considering, one of the things that's on the table is upgrading the second box that's there. You've already allowed them carte blanche for a third cabinet. My concern is, how many more cabinets are we going to put there? Can we get four? Can we get five? Can we get six if we turn them, if we turn them on a side? I did request AT&amp;T to look for a different option for an alternate location. And they told me it was going to run about $150,000. I'm figuring with all these boxes that they eventually get there, it's going to cost me more than that, discounting my property, to be able to sell it. Along with the boxes, there's always a problem with, they're unsightly, they're dirty. I've been constantly for the last six years cleaning graffiti off it. I spoke to AT&amp;T back in, in, in mid-October. They said that they would send someone to clean it up. I also, I, I want to thank the, the Public Works Department, who I spoke with last year, who came by to clean up the graffiti. I want to thank you very much. But it's still a, a trap for household items and trash that is left behind and I have to maintain. I've got two cabinets, one 10 feet outside my front door, along with a vault. I believe that I have done my fair share of supporting the city with these services. They've got to start finding a new alternative. Please, please stop the madness. If AT&amp;T wants to turn my, my house into a hub, they're more than welcome to buy it for me and I will be more than happy to sell it to them. But please, how many more boxes are? But please, how many more boxes are we going to get on? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Moreno, did you want to speak as well?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate your time. In regard to the box itself, Mr. Petavello had stated that it was going to be ten feet high. It's now five feet high and it was.
I did say six feet, six by six.
Okay, I heard. I'm sorry. I heard ten. At this point, in reference to the permit application, AT&amp;T was proposing the third cabinet. We believe that we have the right of way. So by adding that third cabinet, Mr. Petavello had came to me and stated that he didn't get concerned with it. So I went back to the design. As Rafat had mentioned, we had looked at the current picture that you guys had seen where it shows that the doors would open up towards the street. We would have had to had actually had that curb painted red. And that's because we need to have twenty four access, twenty four hour access to the cabinet because it it provides landline services as well as our emergency services. What we're going to be adding to it is our fiber. And with this fiber, we're going to be able to potentially be able to bring in fiber services to four hundred and eighty three properties. So with that, we would actually be, rather than placing the third cabinet, we went ahead and stated that we could just do what we call a retrofit, which is reskinning the original cabinet and adding in the fiber services as well as the copper that's already currently there. In regards to a third alternative, what we did talk about was completely rotating the cabinet. So then the doors would actually open on either side of the landscape strip. So our technicians could stand in the landscape rather than needing to take out someone's parking space. They could find parking within the street and they'd still be able to walk up to the cabinet and do their work when they when it's necessary. So at this point, that is what we were looking at. Whether we go with the third cabinet, otherwise we would be, as I stated, hopefully being able to do the reskin, which is rotating it as well as just enlarging the cabinet to provide both the copper and the fiber services.
My concern to the city council is how many more cabinets are they going to put there? I'm not looking at this now. I'm looking at this for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Petavello. Yep. So thank you to both. I think we've heard from both and I know you'll keep your cameras on in case there are additional questions of either of you or of Rafat. And I will start with the vice mayor, please.
I have a specific question for Ms. Moreno. The last alternative that you talked about turning the cabinet around and beskinning it, as you said, so that it opens towards the sidewalk. What are the dimensions of the final reskinned cabinet?
It's the same dimensions. It's just rotated. So it would still be on that cement pad that's there. And there's doors, there would be doors on either side of the cabinet. So we, our technician could still be able to access the cabinet from the backside or the front side, depending on what services we were going to be adding.
So this, so it would be what what Rafat showing us, the blue box?
Yes, but instead of how it's width, it would be rotated.
Right. Okay, so it would be the same height and I don't know, it looks maybe a couple of feet wider. Is that is that fair?
Correct. And the reason why we would rotate it is because a technician at this time, if we were to have that larger box, he still would not be able to stand on that pad and open the doors.
Right. I understand why you need to rotate it. So that is that is your preferred alternative?
Yes.
Okay. And 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 so that, if we deny the appeal tonight, that is what will happen?
That will eliminate the third box as well as it does allocate both things to happen as far as reducing the actual footprint within front of his property, which is still within the road right of way, but at the same time allowing us to bring in fiber services.
Right. So if we if we uphold your permit, you will go ahead and build that that blue box?
If I if I may jump in, the permit is for a third cabinet. And because we couldn't find any basis to to deny it, we wrote the resolution towards placing the third cabinet. Rotating rotating a seventy six inch wide cabinet, ninety degrees, we have not had a chance to evaluate that alternative because there is a requirement to stay two feet away from the face of curb. And I'm not sure that it fits that way. So this alternative needs to be looked into in closer detail. To answer Vice Mayor's Bush's question, it doesn't revert directly or automatically to the this alternative.
Okay, okay. So so then this is really important, Ms. Moreno. Do you still want a permit for a third box?
Yes, but at this time, yes, we do.
Is the enlarging the second, the original box off the table?
So, Mr. Petavello, let's do that. Let's having going around for the council questions. Because I think some of your questions, I think the council is going to also ask. And I do want to re go back and visit what Vice Mayor just said. So we actually have not seen one of the alternatives that was just described. The rotation of the box ninety degrees, which would actually be probably be from the homeowner's perspective narrower versus wider. So it might be a less visual impact. But what we just heard from the deputy public works director is that that might not adhere to our code. So we're basically, there's a criteria that we don't have enough information on or an option. Is that is that correct, Rafat? That's what I heard.
That that is correct. I I we have, staff has not had the chance to evaluate the rotation of the cabinet ninety degrees and to make sure that it fits the standard specifications that is in the encroachment, in the franchise agreement resolution.
Okay, well, let's keep going on with the questions, keep going on with questions as we all kind of sit with that. Vice mayor, did you have some additional follow up?
Yes, I have additional follow up on for the appellant. What is your preferred alternative? The third, the third cabinet or the modified existing cabinet, the enlarged existing cabinet?
My preference would be the enlarged cabinet versus having the three cabinets and and the vault.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Kurtz.
So I could be wrong or Google could be outdated. What is the, there's, it looks like there's a utility box across the street. What is that one? Directly where you you're proposing putting the third box directly across, if I'm in the right location? It looks like there's another utility box. And I was wondering if that was a consideration. If I have the wrong location, that is possible.
Directly across the street?
Mm hmm.
I'm I'm searching that.
Councilmember, this is Bill Guerin. There are other utilities that have similar boxes in the city and it's quite possible. It's a different utility that's that's utilizing that location. But we can find out for you and get back.
Well, I'm just wondering if it's in this, yeah. I mean, I was wondering if why if that was not considered, if there's already a utility box on that side? And if that is something that could be taken into consideration? Or are we, is it because of this? I have no idea.
Let me, if I if I may, share my screen and show the council what what that might be. Most likely, it is a different utility like Bill mentioned. This is the property. You can see my screen, right?
Yes.
This is the box. And this is the second box that is not AT&amp;T. And this is the location of where the AT&amp;T requested the encroachment permit across the street. I'm not seeing any any boxes, but Ms. Moreno.
It's toward the corner. There it is.
Oh, there it is.
This here is, this is the probably the, for sure, actually, it's the signal cabinet. It's the cabinet to run this traffic signal at D Street. And I don't see any other boxes. And we we actually asked the question directly to PG, to AT&amp;T to ask if they can locate the the third box across the street. And as you may imagine, can imagine, all of the underground will be on one side of the street. And they crossing the street was going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I guess my question, you know, this maybe is not cheap, a cheap solution. But it will definitely not be a big box in front of a door. You, if you look in the same side of the street where the stoplight is, can you just build a box in there next to the stoplight? So it's not in front of or near that area, so it's not in front of like an entrance?
I'm not sure who answers that because we talked about, you're talking about near where traffic signal one is.
Yeah, Rafat, if you can put the map again.
Sure.
I believe it would be within the vision triangle.
So if you move towards this street. Yeah, over there. Okay, on the left side, there is a stoplight in the, yeah, right there.
Well, that's a question for Ms. Moreno. Could this whole box be relocated to here? And and the larger box is placed here?
We would not be able to relocate the larger box. What we are recommending is that third cabinet to go in that location. But the other one is actually the landline services, which is all of our copper. And to, there is no way for us to do that. We would have to take hundreds of customers out of service in order to even relocate that. And it's something that then they would have to be out of service for quite some time for us to replace everything. And that's again, emergency services as well as our landlines that are currently in there now.
All right. Now, I thought that that was a good question, Councilmember. I had the same one. So what you're saying, Ms. Moreno, is that it's all new services? And so we were thinking, oh, you just put those ones down there, but it's too hard to relocate the existing service. So it's really how do you put the new, which needs additional capacity?
Correct.
So just like another question is like, so if there is an accident tomorrow and a truck hits that box, you know, and is is a disaster, you know, what happens in that? I mean, do you have, do you have like a backup to, or does it? Like, that's that's the only system that you have for the landlines, for emergency services? I assume that you have a backup, maybe?
We don't at this time because it, customers are still allowed to purchase copper and that's within that box. So we have no way of forcing customers to transfer from copper over to fiber services. We can offer those services, but we would never take somebody out. So if a car or there was an accident and something happened to the box, we would just replace that box with those same facilities, which is the same type of services.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rich and Lisa, for being here tonight to talk about this. I think of the options that are listed here, and I know I inquired with the city manager who referred me to the city attorney's office on my question, which was, I I think what I'm hearing is that there may be willingness to look at the compromise further. It's not listed here among our options, but I would like to see if we could consider a motion to continue to a date certain that we would come up with, maybe the next meeting. For that to be decided, what's in front of us right now is adopting a resolution to deny the appeal and go for the third box. It sounds like what I heard the appellant say is that there would be willingness to to consider the, one of the alternatives. And I just want to make sure that that is still something we could do because it's not listed among the options or other than direct staff to return with more information. So I just want to see if that's a motion we could make.
Good question. City attorney.
So just to make sure I capture the question correctly from Councilmember Hill, the questions whether we or the council could adopt a motion by continuing this item to the next regular meeting.
Yes, assuming that the parties are indication, are indicating willingness to consider one of the alternatives, it's not the third box because it sounds like that's not something that the appellant wants. I don't think the appellant wants any of them, but I'm just saying it sounds like there's willingness to look at one of the other alternatives.
And indeed, the the council could, you know, continue the matter regardless of what kind of indications it was receiving from the parties and and, you know, provide that direction with the with the hope that there would be that consideration. And then at the next meeting, there would be a report back. And if there was, you know, some success and, you know, some meeting of the minds on on another option, then the council would hear about that then. And if not, the council could just then vote at the next meeting. So I don't, I don't know of any other reason why the matter has to be decided tonight. I'd have to defer to staff on that. But I I assume it could, it could be, the decision could be delayed until the next meeting with a motion along the lines the council and the rail just stated, if the council wished to adopt that motion.
No, that clarification is important because we weren't sure if there was a certain timeline, given the appeal because we don't, again, tend to have these. So we didn't know, did he just disappear? Oh, there's back. That was so, okay. So that was the only thing, Rob. We weren't sure that when you have an appeal, if there's certain timeframes that you need to hit.
Well, we've we've begun hearing the appeal. And I am aware of no reason why we cannot continue the the matter that we have. You know, it's our hearing that we're governing. We we don't have a self-imposed deadline for deciding the appeal.
Okay, because I I think to Bill and Councilmember Hill, if you have other questions, I do want you to chime in. But but I think the other part about that appeal would be of the rotating the box. We actually need to do some, not to do additional research on our end to to really understand if that option is feasible, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yes, Director Guerin.
I just have a point of clarification, Mayor. Lisa, how long would it take for you to provide a design for this rotated box that would give us the opportunity to review it and make sure that it fits within the right of way?
I could have it done within, by the end of this week and provide it to you.
And 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 then my point, I think, is that we would be able to review it quickly and determine whether it fits and be able to come back in two weeks with with updated information.
Sounds like a good path forward so far. Yeah, Councilmember Hill and then I think Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, so more, so I I did appreciate the question from the the appellant. You know, what what are the limits to the number of boxes that can be placed? Because it does seem like, you know, what I saw in the staff report, there are eight different kind of criteria that need to be examined. You know, what is the, I mean, I'm assuming there's a theoretical limit. What is the limit, you know, where we can place a number of boxes in front of a residence?
To address this question, currently in the resolution, there is no limit to the number of boxes. However, we ask for a clarification from AT&amp;T as to their future plans. And in twenty twenty two, they're only updating two boxes in within the city of San Rafael. This one and some other location. I mean, it's not like we have a, an avalanche of of new boxes coming into the public right of way. It is unusual to have this many boxes in front of one property. I give that to Mr. Petavello. But at the same time, the frontage of that property is long. So and and it is a prominent corner in a, in a rather dense area. So, you know, we need, we need utilities in the public right of way. I hope that answers your question.
It's helpful. I think, you know, in the in the long scheme, I'd love for us to be able to consider consider criteria, another criterion that may consider that. Obviously, that doesn't exist here, but there should be limits. I think those are my questions.
No, it's an excellent point. So we had the original criteria. We know this is a very narrow area where the city can actually have criteria. Is that one that could be added going forward? Because again, I think we understand the boxes need Because again, I think we understand the boxes need to be here. And is that something that we could add as a ninth criteria going forward? I think we originally did the criteria, I don't know, Mary Beth, how many years ago? Was it a couple of years ago, three years ago? Can't remember when we did it.
2007.
Oh, more than a couple of years ago then. And it's not just AT&amp;T, there might be other boxes. So it could be a, I don't know, one of our own boxes. So I think what I hear from Councilmember Hill, it's not specific to AT&amp;T. It's actually having those exterior cabinets outside properties.
And I think it would require negotiation with the franchisees to, to change the agreement that we have.
And it might be something, something a little bit ambiguous, like a design standard. You know, all efforts will be used, will be undertaken to minimize the number of facilities at any one location, or, or something along those lines. I can't believe this is, that we're the only jurisdiction that's ever thought about this. I bet there are best practices out there of ways to more evenly distribute these, so that you don't end up with one house. Because they're, they're going to end up clustered, because utilities tend to be clustered. So somebody, you know, could conceivably end up with half a dozen of these, or something like that. So, but why don't we do a little research and see if we can find best practices on, on limiting, how best to limit the siding of these, these types of facilities? And then, as Councilmember Hill suggests, let's continue this matter to allow AT&amp;T to investigate this potential alternative, which is the preferred outcome of the appellant. And maybe if we could get that to be AT&amp;T's proposal, then the appeal could be withdrawn. And then that would resolve the matter.
Well-stated. What we'll do first is see if there's any public comment. But I like how you're talking about both the short term, which is the matter right in front of us, and then the long-term, being the franchise agreement, that was 2007, that was a while ago. So maybe there is a lot, there are good reasons for us to look at, you said best practices, but maybe just regulations or things that evolved in the last, how many years that is? 13, 14 years, okay. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor Kate, I did not receive any emails for this item.
Okay, I will close the public comment and bring it back. I do want to ask the city manager just to join us, because this is unusual, and I want to make sure that we're going ahead in a way that makes sense, as well as Director Guerin. Okay, thank you. So what, I know you've been listening, Jim. I think what's, we're considering is continuing the matter to a date certain, so that AT&amp;T can provide another design, thank you, Lisa, in the, by the end of the next week. In which case, once we get that, then staff can see if that works with our own codes. And at the same time, concurrently, is looking to see if there's other best practices to see if it warrants adding additional criteria, recognizing that would be a bigger, longer conversation with other franchises, franchisers at a future date. So, Jim, is that what you heard? I just want to make sure, because this is unusual.
It is, and that sounds fine. And I think that if we are fortunate enough to find a solution that works, as Vice Mayor Bushy points out, we, we wouldn't be agendizing this and coming back at your next meeting, I don't believe, unless the city attorney corrects me. Because the, in that case, the appellant would drop the appeal, and there would be nothing for you to hear. So...
Agreed, that would be terrific. So it would work. And just to be clear, as Mayor Kate said, we do need to specify the date, because in the event we do need to have the hearing continued, we don't wish to renotice it. So I assume we would notice the hearing that we may require for the next regular meeting. I don't have the date in front of me, but you should enunciate it in your motion.
The 20th?
The 20th. And so then what do we do with the resolution that's in front of us, if we want? Or we just continue this? Okay, so the Vice Mayor, she's, she's going to, she's going, she knows what to say. I shall, unless there are any additional comments, I think we've had a really robust conversation. And I will, this is kind of unusual, but Mr. Pedavello, is there anything that you would like to add before we continue this item?
I, I think I said it all when I said, I think I've done my fair share with two cabinets and a vault, and I think it's time for, for someone to take a look at other locations. Thank you. I want to thank the town council meeting very much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Moreno, anything that you want to add to before we continue?
I would just like to thank you all for your time, and I appreciate the brainstorming that started to take place, as far as looking at different alternatives. Because obviously, the last thing we want to do is have an upset property owner. Unfortunately, this is the public right-of-way, so that is where we were going to, you know, try to be less intrusive to everybody. So again, I appreciate your time, and yes, I will definitely be getting those drawings over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I like the idea of the brainstorming. It's, you know, virtually, we're still able to do some things. So appreciate everyone's putting their thinking cap on. So with that, I will turn it to the Vice Mayor.
I move that, that we continue Agenda Item 7A to our next regularly scheduled meeting on December 20th, 2021.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Jorn Salati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Again, thank you to all involved, and we will see you there in two weeks for the conversation. So there aren't any other items, and I invite the staff to turn their cameras back on before we adjourn. See, I know you guys are still there. Just give a moment. So this evening, we had an incredibly unfortunate incident occur. There was hate speech in the chat, which people, public, may or may not have been able to see. But we had folks call in and start to say things that were 100% unacceptable. We all know that, who's on the screen and everyone listening. It was unfortunate that we had to change the public comment to email only, but I will not hesitate to do that again. We will not be a platform to abuse anyone on this screen, anyone not on this screen, and I feel very strongly about that. And I thank you all for your support and what you do every single day. We know that there is a lot of suffering out there, and it sometimes manifests as really hateful actions. And it's really by staying strong and working together that we can continue to be the type of city we want to be, both in terms of what staff does, what the council does, and what the community does to show up with each other. So with that, this meeting is adjourned, and I will see you in two weeks. Good night.
Yeah.
Night.